It's like have Counselor Dave Shipley, Counselor Shannon Ellsworth, and Counselor Bill Fillmore come down here. And we've got a little, little plaque and a little gift for you. Just to remind you of your time here on the council. If the rest of the council wants to come down, I think we're going to take some photos and make sure Dave remembers this moment. All right, we're not going to let you go away that quietly, though. I'm sure you'd all like to leave us with some, some parting words of wisdom. So again, just thank you so much for your service to Provo, for your willingness to serve on the council. But if any of you would like to share some words, I know we would all appreciate it.
I'll, I'll say something. I just, I just want to thank the folks who voted for me, gave me an opportunity, didn't know me, most of you when, when you voted for me. Maybe don't know me now. I, I don't say a lot in these meetings. But it's been a privilege to, to serve and an opportunity that all, that I really appreciated, the opportunity to just serve while I was, while I was here. So thank you. Thank you very much. I'm not going to miss any of these meetings. But I do, I will miss people. I'll miss the people that I was able to serve with and just appreciate working with all of you. I appreciate staff. I appreciate administration, a lot of people within the administration. The city is in excellent hands. I didn't run again because the finance department is awesome. And they're doing a great job and they respect and honor the fact that the money that they're working with is our money. You know, the cities, it's, it's our money. And they are very careful and they're very good stewards. And so between the mayor being very careful about that and knowing that Scott will be careful about that, you know, and, and knowing that John and his team are excellent at it. I feel very comfortable that the city's in great hands financially. And that's, that's really important to me. So I'm really, really grateful for that. Thank you.
Yeah, I did not prepare for this, but I just want to express my gratitude for the many people who make Provo City work. And we don't see them in many parts of our lives, but they're solving problems for citizens every single day. And sometimes it's when you didn't put your trash out at the right time and you run out there in your slippers and the person driving the trash truck back up to get your, your trash, right? They're solving problems for us every single day and they're keeping us safe. And so I just really want to express my gratitude to people who dedicate their lives and their careers to providing these services. And then made so many wonderful friends along the campaign trail and through email and in person along the way. So thank you for the, the new and hopefully ongoing relationships that have been created. And yeah, I hope that people will get more involved in Provo City. That's always been, my hope is that people will be more involved and they'll vote more and they'll read the issues and, and participate in email and come to these meetings. So thank you to everyone who's participated in any of those processes. And thank you to my colleagues who give so much time and energy to this city.
Well, a couple of years ago at a council dinner, David Shipley, my esteemed friend, referred to me as the senior statesman of the council. And I thought about that since then. It's pretty clear the emphasis was on senior. Which reminds me of an axiom for my profession, which goes like this. Old lawyers never die. They just lose their appeal. And so so unless I lose my appeal altogether, I'll be brief. I, four years ago, when we all got elected to this, I don't think any of us saw the storms that were brewing. We've been through a lot together, ups and downs and COVID-19 pandemic, redistricting, the never-ending ATU debates, and it just, the list goes on. But one of, one of the things I've appreciated most is this council you see before you has made a very deliberate effort to maintain a high level of collegiality. We get along really well. And we, we occasionally differ on our opinions, but we do it with respect. And I can assure you that there's not a member of the council sitting up here that is not well motivated. Our differences of opinion arise from different experiences in life, but everyone up here sincerely wants what's best for Provo. And I just, it's been an honor to be part of that. And I throw the love and respect to every one of them and have really enjoyed working with our administration. We, I've been around Provo long enough to know that it has not always been such. We have had administrations who have differing quality. We've had councils that got along well and some that didn't. And we've had a remarkably productive four years of this council working with our mayor. And I think Provo has been the beneficiary of a lot of collaborative work. Want to mention one thing. This is more biographical. I was going to say something about this tonight. I might as well say it now. Some of you may have seen something in the newspapers in the last week or two about a major project that is now being considered to be the center point of the big development at Point of the Mountain. You're all aware that where we used to have a prison is now a six or 700 acre blank field and a, an outfit called the Point Commission was appointed by the legislature and the governor to really optimize that site for the future of Utah, kind of a once in a lifetime opportunity to do something really great. So we expect that that'll have a lot to do with accelerating Utah's progress as a technology center. But also holds out all kinds of opportunities for housing and recreation and so on. It was, the focal point of the article in the newspapers was a, a thing called the Statue of Responsibility, which is being projected as the artistic centerpiece of that development. Some of you may have heard of that, some of you not. It goes back to a man named Viktor Frankl. Viktor Frankl was an Auschwitz survivor who came home from concentration camps. And in nine days wrote a book called Man's Search for Meaning, one of the most popular widely published books in the world. In a later version of that book, he postulated, wouldn't it be great if America built another statue besides the Statue of Liberty? He said, the concept of freedom, there's really two sides to that coin. On the one hand is liberty. But liberty left by itself leads to chaos and anarchy. Their side of that coin of freedom is responsibility. And when you combine responsibility, both individual and civic responsibility with liberty, then you've got the best of all worlds. And you've got the potential to do some really great things. Towards the end of his life, Viktor Frankl, who spent his whole life in Vienna, Austria, got on the lecture circuit in America and met a fellow from Provo, a man named Stephen Cubby. And Stephen Cubby fell in love with the concept of building a statue of responsibility in the West as a philosophical bookend of the Statue of Liberty in the East. And I have been the lawyer for that project for nearly 20 years. And serving on the Board of Trustees as well. And it appears that that's about to be a reality. We had long thought that it would be built. This, by the way, is a 305 foot tall statue, which is the exact height of the Statue of Liberty. We had always envisioned that on the West Coast, but a variety of political issues have rendered that untenable, at least in the short run. And just a few months ago, we were approached by the governor and legislative leaders here in Utah. And said to us, how would you feel about building the Statue of Responsibility in Utah? And we thought about that and we said, why not? Is there a more responsible state in the Union than Utah? And the more I've thought about it, you know, I've been proud to serve in Provo because I don't know a more responsible city than Provo. And I hope it stays that way. I, I've, I've widely traveled and widely read and I, I don't know a city that comes closer to being that shining city on a hill in Provo. Proud to be part of it and wish the new council all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next we'll look at the December 2023 Employee of the Month. And this will be presented by Mayor Michelle Kofusi. Chair McKay and Vice Chair Whipple and members of the municipal council. Today we have another exciting opportunity to recognize an employee who has demonstrated exceptional care for an exceptional community. I am happy to introduce our fire chief, Jeremy Hedman. Come on up, chief. We will be presenting November's Employee of the Month award to an outstanding individual in our fire, fire department. On that note, I'll give the floor to you, chief.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. It's an honor today to award the Employee of the Month firefighter paramedic Chase Kansey. Chase has been a member of our department for three years, but he came to us with nine years of experience from another fire department. He's currently a firefighter paramedic at Fire Station 25, where he has proven to be reliable on all kinds of emergency calls, whether they're medical or fire. He responds faithfully and very calmly would be the best way to put it. He's, he's just got a calming effect on the, on the fire scene. Chase, recently we had our, our Christmas party for the fire department and he was recently awarded the firefighter of the year award for our fire department. And that is nominated by the body of the fire department. So we, we take votes. We get recommendations and then we tally up and he was the clear winner for firefighter of the year award. So he's done some amazing things. Chase, one of his supervisors said this, and I'll read it to you. Chase came to Provo with the background and level of commitment to the fire service and Provo Fire has noticed many things. Chase very, very quickly invited or volunteered to be part of nearly every specialty team in Provo. In a very short amount, as a crew member, he is very well liked, respected by those he works with. Is, he has a positive attitude and is someone I know that I can rely on to get things done. Chase is already a strong informal leader in Provo Fire and is someone I would encourage young firefighters to look up to as an example and follow it to his leadership. Chase has a bright future in Provo Fire Department. I would agree with that. I also got a recommendation from BYU, who's one of our partners, especially on the EMS side, but one of their members, we were putting, we have a mass casualty trailer that has medical supplies for, it's in a trailer for, for big disastrous type events. And they, and with Chase's help, restocked and put more appropriate and better organized equipment on this. And they reached out without any, any prodding for me. They just said, hey, Chase did such a great job. We'd love to see him get some recognition. So he's, he's being noticed all over the place. Chase, it's a great, it's a pleasure to work with Chase. And it's an honor to give him the employee of the month award for November. Chase, come on up.
Just wanted to say thank you. It has my name on it, but I couldn't do it without my team. So
All right. Next, we are, Provo received the 2023 Utah IT Excellence Award, and that will be presented by John Borget, our Director of Administrative Services.
Like to invite Stan Shinsky, Grace Tour, and Josh Eerig, if they could come forward. I would also mention that Phil Yule was part of this project too before he went to Energy, but he's not able to be here tonight. Come on up. Okay. Thank you. Provo City Information Division is delighted to share the exciting news of being honored with the 2023 Utah IT Excellence Award for Best Use of GIS. And I would just mention, for those that may not know, GIS stands for Geographic Information System. The prestigious award was presented by Allen, or the Chief Administrative Officer of State of Utah and Government Technology, during the Utah Digital Government Summit held in June. The org was based on Provo City Maps Portal Project, where the community can see 16 detailed maps covering parcels, trails, zoning, things-to-do projects, even chicken counts. The portal is recognized for its overall composition, user-friendly design, and breadth of service, utility to citizens, and creative applications. The Utah IT Excellence Award honors emerging leaders and innovative projects in government IT that enable Utah to better meet constituent expectations for services and information, improve operating efficiency, and conserve tax dollars. The awards are also provide an opportunity for state and local government in Utah to learn about IT leaders and projects that are changing the way government does business. I always like to mention that I've had an opportunity to myself to go in and work with these interactive maps and play with it and have fun with it. There's a lot of valuable information there, and it is very easy to use. And I would just mention that Stan is our GIS Coordinator. Grace is GIS Systems Analyst, and of course, Josh is our IS Information Systems Division Director. This is the award, and it's really a great accomplishment, and I just want to present this to Stan and Josh.
John, I know the council staff is incredibly grateful to GIS, and we've used you a lot this year, so thank you.
Yep, they're amazing. Thank you.
All right, next, we have our Provology graduation. This will be presented by Scott Henderson. Provology is a wonderful program that we have here in Provo, and I'm really grateful that we do it.
Thank you, Council, for this opportunity. Over three months of Provology, this group of citizens have become the most informed in our community about their local government. They should be recognized for this commitment. In sessions that I was a part of and as an observer, the benefits of learning was a two-way street. Graduates learned about city departments, but we also learned from our citizens and gained perspective from them also. I'd like to ask Mayor Kofusi, who's already here, and Catrice McKay, Council Chair, to come and help me as I read the names for the Fall 2003 Provology graduating class. We ask graduates to come up as their name is called and stay up front for a picture. And then for those same graduates, we have dinner and gifts in the community room just off the main lobby. So at this point, I will start with the names, and you can hit it, Michael. Rachel Breen. Ruth Evelyn Chapman. Cameron Sindrich. Dylan Sindrich. Ashley Despain. Celestia Frey. Sarah Frey. David Lewis. Joni McIntyre. Kim McIntyre. Joseph Shelton. Andrew Tate. George Tate. Karen Tate. Natalie Tate. Grace Teller. And last in the class of Fall 2023, only alphabetically, is Emily Weatherhead. Thank you, Michael, for the music.
All right, an informed citizenry is always best for everyone, so I just love this program. All right, next, we're gonna look at the Provo School District Center for Advanced Professional Studies. They go by CAPS, if any, some of you probably have kids and Provo High or High School, or a few that have done this. And they're gonna do a public service announcement on pet waste. It'll also be presented by Brett Borget, our Media Services Manager.
Hello, Council. Thank you for this opportunity to come here tonight. This is our third year that Provo City has partnered with the Provo School District in their CAPS program. Previously, we touched on topics such as pedestrian safety, how to dispose of prescription drugs, how to prevent litter, and we have the fun, hot topic of cleaning up your pet poop. And so, we have been meeting for the last few months, and we've come up with this, what I think is, we've raised the bar. This is a really fun PSA, and this is going to launch a much larger campaign that is coming up in the next few months about the importance of this. And so I will turn the time over to Kara and Elijah.
Yeah. Good evening, Council. Like Brett said, my name is Kara.
And I'm Elijah Frant.
And we're Provo CAP intern students. At the beginning of our semester, we were made aware of a Provo pet waste problem that way too many people are not cleaning up after their pets and leaving doggy bags and waste all over our parks and trails.
Yeah, so we know it's winter right now and it's pretty snowy outside, but this has been an increasingly huge problem over the past few years. So we made a PSA and a couple infographics to address this problem. And the spirit of these pieces of media are comedic and lighthearted, but it really gets at the heart of the problem, which is that it's a people problem and not a pet problem. And it's a matter of education and information. So we went with a superhero theme to kind of make a very stark, you know, very memorable imagery for this campaign. And here is the video.
Without further ado. All right, this is very fancy up here.
All right, cool. So we had a ton of fun making this, and we were working very closely with the media team, including Brett Borget. And the monologue kind of opening scene is inspired by the new Batman movie. And probably my favorite part of the entire project was just working with professionals and professional equipment and being able to film drone shots and be able to work with an actor who had that cool Batman suit.
Yeah, actually, when we went to film on the Provo River Trail, there was already like dog bags and like pet waste like all over the trail. So I can say this was an authentic video. We did not stage anything. But I guess my favorite part was actually getting the, like, recruiting the dogs to work in the PSA. The first dog was actually a friend of mine's. She was there, but the second dog was actually just conveniently at the park and agreed to be in the video, which is super fun.
So we made a couple infographics that are here right now. And we talked to a couple Provo employees, including Jason Swenson and Doug Robbins, to get kind of the real information about things about fines and what the exact rules are of what you can and can't do. So the one on the left is the one I did, and the one on the right is the one Kara did.
The most challenging part of this was actually figuring out how to use Photoshop and like putting the infographic together as neither Elijah nor I have actually ever designed an infographic before, but I think they turned out super nice.
Yes, these are some behind-the-scenes pictures of the whole process. And the entire experience has been great, and it's been awesome working with everyone at the city who we've been working with.
Yes, we're super glad we could hopefully help out and get a few steps closer to fixing the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kara and Elijah. All right, our last presentation tonight, a presentation of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. It will be presented by John Borget, our Director of Administrative Services.
Thank you, Chair McKay and the Honorable Counsel. I'm pleased to come this year with our Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. I would just mention that this is our report. It's actually a 146-page document. And I'm just gonna, and there's different sections. There's an introductory section as well as a financial section with the financial statements and notes and a statistical section towards the back. So there are a number of different sections. The, in the introductory, in the introductory section, there is a, what's called a letter transmittal. And this really provides a good overview of the report, giving you kind of, giving the reader some opportunity to learn some information and just understand what's in the report. And so that's where I'm going to be doing most of my focus. When I'm done going through kind of some highlights of the report, then I want to turn the time over to Jeff Miles, who's our auditor. So in the section here where I've highlighted, state law and local ordinance requires that all general purpose local governments publish within six months of the close of each fiscal year, a complete set of financial statements presented in conformity with with U.S. General Accepted Accounting Principles, or GAAP. Now, we just mentioned that our fiscal year ends in June, and so that six-year requirement, and that six-month requirement is by the end of December, and that's why we're here today. And then in conformance with the requirement, we issue the the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the City of Provo for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023. I'd also mention that this report is available online for residents. If you go to provo.org and then go into Finance and then Financial Reports, you'll see a section that has the Annual Comprehensive Annual Report listed there. This report consists of management's representations concerning the finances of the city. Management assumes full responsibility for the completeness and reliability of all information presented in the report. Down at the next paragraph down below, it says HBME LLC, a firm licensed certified public accountants selected by municipal council, has audited the city's financial statements. We go to the next page. There are three sections, like three overall sections, the introductory and the financial and statistical. And we're just kind of touching on the introduction to start with. On the next page, it talks a little about the economic condition. "The local and state economy has been impacted by a slowing of the economy resulting from higher interest rates, continued high inflation, which we have seen some improvement, and also driven by the cost of oil and other essential items and decreases in demand. The overall economy is interesting because as things can change on a dime, and as most of us know, within just the last month or so, we've seen oil purchase prices starting to drop. We've also seen interest rates dropping, and so it's hard. And what we try to do as a city and as administration is just to watch closely and monitor those environments as we plan and look at the city's resources. As one of the things that we've seen year after year is that that the Provo unemployment rate is well below the national rate. For the fiscal year, we were at 2.23, where the national rate was at 3.58. And unemployment has continued to be low, and that's been a positive through some of these changes that we've gone through. And as I mentioned, but I'll just read again, it says, "We are closely monitoring the current economic environment, are being very cautious to align the commitment of city resources with the anticipated revenues for the city." And then just talking about some large numbers, the city's total tax revenue of 61.3 million increased by 2 million or 3.4%. Sales tax revenue of approximately 27.8 increased by 735,000 or 2.7% over the prior year. And for the first three months of fiscal year '24, sales tax revenues compared to prior year were down 0.2% or $14,286. So right now, through the first three months of fiscal year '24, our sales tax revenues are almost mirroring exactly what we had in the prior year. So we're watching that, and we meet as a management, with management, with the department directors, and are reviewing, watching that very closely. Um, and we meet as a management with management, with the department directors and are reviewing, watching that very closely. One of the things that we talk about in the report in the transmitter letter is some major initiatives that are going on with the city. Uh, and I would just mention that the city is in the process of constructing a regional sports park, which the council is all aware of and we're real excited about. Uh, just mentioned that here in the fall of twenty-four, uh, they plan to open and that's exciting. Uh, another major initiative is the new fire station. And as we look over uh, next to this building, we can see construction started there. And the plan and hope is that that will be completed by the end of the calendar year, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, construction is also expected to be completed for the new wastewater treatment plant in the fall of two thousand twenty-four. And then we're in the process and close to starting construction on a new thirty million gallon uh, water treatment plant. Uh, and that will begin sometime in fiscal twenty twenty-four. And we had a meeting with the directors today and likely that could start as early as, as January. So that's exciting. Um, we do also list significant events by uh, many of the departments, and I'm not going to go through those now, but they're there available for the residents and for the council to review and see, see the significant accomplishments. Then it talks a little bit about awards and acknowledgements. Um, the Governmental Financial Officers Association of the United States and Canada awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for Provo City Corporation for its annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. The certificate of achievement is a prestigious national award and recognizes conformance with the highest standards for preparation of state and local government financial reports. The city of Provo has participated in this program for years. Uh, there are um, individuals that review this report that we submit to them very closely to make sure it meets all the guidelines and, and requirements by um, GFOA and the uh, um, get the GAZB. And so that's important. And so I would just mention that this is not a small effort and uh, it takes, we, we won't know on this report until next year because it takes on about six to eight months to review the report, but we will be submitting this report as well. I would like to uh, express my appreciation to uh, to my staff uh, for the significant effort that they have put in. And I will just want to mention that uh, Kelsey Zarback, who's our the manager of our audit and uh, works closely with our auditors, has done an amazing job. Dan Followed, our Division Finance Director, has had a significant part of as well as Andrea Wright and Anisa Orwin. And we would like to just thank them for their efforts. I would also mention that this isn't just a finance effort. Um, it affects all departments. Uh, so I want to thank each of the directors uh, for their input and as well as the employees throughout the city. I would also like to thank the mayor and municipal council for their interest and support and planning and conducting the financial operation of the city in a dedicated and responsible manner. Like to talk just for a few minutes about our, the general fund balance. If you go to the next, and this is something that we watch really closely, um, because the general fund is a huge part of the city. And as we monitor and watch it, we like to uh, make sure that we're setting aside adequate reserves and we have adequate reserves in the event that uh, difficult things happen or unexpected things happen. And so we watch it closely. And so want to mention a couple of things. Uh, you'll notice when you look at revenues and subsidy transfers, um, in fiscal twenty-one, they were about seventy-nine million. And then fiscal twenty-two, they jumped up to a hundred and seventeen. And then fiscal twenty-three, they went back to eighty-nine. And there might be a question, why the big increase in twenty-two and then the drop back in twenty-three? Well, in twenty-two, we recognized approximately thirty-four million in ARPA revenues. And those ARPA revenues were included in those in that hundred and seventeen. Had we not had ARPA that year, our revenues would have been about eighty-three million, four hundred thousand. So it would have been on that same trajectory that we've had over the years. Also, when you look down at the bottom, you'll notice that our fund balance was went from seventeen to twenty-three. And then it went to forty and then it dropped back to twenty-nine. Uh, the reason for that increase in two thousand twenty-two and then drop in two thousand twenty-three is ARPA as well. We had ten million dollars of ARPA funds that pretty much gave us the ability. It was from revenue loss uh, from COVID. And then we just a standard amount that we took. And that money didn't have the same restrictions that some of the other money did. And so that ten million was included in two thousand twenty-two. And then the council worked very closely with administration to determine the best way to utilize those funds. So then during uh, two thousand twenty-three, they were moved to the appropriate place that could be spent. And that's why we dropped back to the twenty-nine. And so, once again, it would have, our rev, our overall fund balance would have went down slightly from around thirty million to twenty-nine million from twenty-two to twenty-three, but you wouldn't have had those big swings. The other thing that we watched very closely is the percentage of fund balance compared to our revenues and subsidy transfers. And you can see that it was thirty-four point two last year, thirty-two point seven six. The maximum amount the state will allow us to have in the general fund is thirty-five. And so we are a little bit below thirty-five, but we're still in a really good position. Uh, I would also mention though, ju- just that drop in percentage, though we, we don't take it lightly. And uh, there's a couple of things that I'll share that contribute to that dropping some, but but overall, we're still in a good position on a percentage of revenues based on being on, being close to that thirty-five percent. Go to the next page. We're going to talk a little bit about the disaster recovery fund. Uh, about three years ago, um, the council decided to participate in a program that the state introduced. And what it does is it gives us the ability to move money from the general fund to a specific disaster recovery fund that's just sat there. And it's just designed to be there if there is going to be a disaster. Uh, and a portion of the money that the council determined that we would move into there is money that's carried over. Those are funds that we basically budgeted for, but didn't spend and didn't have money that was included for POs or other things. And we, we moved twenty percent of that fund balance over. And so in twenty-three, back in September, the council was uh, we shared with them the carryover report and we also shared with them this number. And this was the amount that was put in based on the balance being twenty percent of two hundred and twenty-five, eight ninety-seven this year for, for carryover. Go to the next slide. This shows the second portion that we do is when we look at the statement of changes, which is similar to what you would consider to be an eight income statement in the private sector. We, the, the decision was that we were going to take ten percent of that net change in fund balance. But because we had the ARPA funds, uh, we felt like didn't make sense. We took those out last year. And then we added them back this year because they were spent. And then we also looked at our BNC revenues and our opera expenditures, well, it being our BNC expenditures. And so anyway, last year, after we took those out, we had a positive six million, so we added six hundred and three, three fifty-two. This year, as I kind of mentioned earlier, we were about nine hundred and fifteen negative after taking those out. And so there would not be Anna any portions added for this part to go to the uh, emergency uh, response fund. So if we go, but if we go to the next page, one more page. Uh, this just kind of shows how I came up with the number on the general fund for the change. But the last page gives, shows where the disaster recovery fund is right now. And uh, so right now, after adding in the twenty-five thousand, eight ninety-seven for the carryover portion, we're now at one point seven, one six million, which includes interest revenue that's in the other column. And so that's pretty significant. And uh, so what that represents, had that money been in the general fund, the general fund would have been one point nine two percent higher. So we would have been pretty close to that thirty-five number. But this is the money that's in the fund. And so I just wanted to let the council know as we've been instructed and is has been approved by the council that we've been following that. And this is where it is at the end of the, at the end of the uh, the year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And then I'll turn the time over to Jeff, who will kind of walk you through a couple of other things in the report as well as their opinion letter.
Okay.
Any questions for John? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Jeff.
Thank you, John. Um, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. We met with the audit committee last week and had a good in-depth discussion about the financial report. So we don't need to go into too much depth on this tonight. Um, this is my sixteenth year to work on the Provo City Audit in different capacities as a kind of an entry level staff and have been serving as the audit partner for uh, the past five years. And this is actually our, our last year on our current contract, but uh, firm's hopeful to to bid for audit services in the future. On page twenty-one of the comprehensive fin- financial report, you'll find our actual audit opinion on the financial statements. And I'll just read that uh, briefly. It says, in our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of Provo City Corporation as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. And the respective changes in financial position and where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with the county principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So a clean opinion on the financial statements for uh, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. Um, we're still wrapping up uh, two more reports that will, we will issue uh, before the end of the fiscal year relating to uh, state compliance, um, as well as internal controls and uh, federal single audit. Um, but at this point, we have no uh, findings to report to the city. And during our audit, we didn't identi- identify any control deficiencies and material weaknesses. We feel that the finance team does a wonderful job um, overseeing the funds of the city. I, I, I think if you look at that letter of transmittal that John had, I mean, the list of projects on there that are ongoing at Provo City right now is, is immense. There's a lot. There's been a lot of uh, federal money flowing into the city and uh, you know, the question came up in the audit committee meeting, like what are, what are some key areas that we need to focus on to, to not run into problems? And, and I think one thing is making sure that, that those federal funds are being spent appropriately and, and for one-time purposes, you know, you don't want to rely on, on grant money being a continual uh, source of availability as well as um, internal loans between funds. And, and we feel like John and counsel do a good job of, of overseeing those. So um, clean opinion for the city's audit this year and, and we're grateful for the opportunity to, to serve Provo City in this capacity. Any questions from council with respect to the audit report?
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
All right. Okay, so I tried to read it.
Okay.
That's the first thing. And um, I had a question about net position on pages twenty-six and twenty-seven. Um, the beginning of twenty-seven says at the end of the current fiscal year, the city is reporting positive net position balances in all three categories of net position. Net investment in capital assets restricted and unrestricted for both governmental and business type activities. I'm assuming that that's referring to the previous table on page twenty-six.
Correct.
But it looks like the restricted net position is down in twenty-three for governmental activities. And so then it's down. Anyway, I, that just was confusing to me because it looked like one is down, but then the paragraph says that they're all up.
In, in total, the city's net position is up for governmental and business type activities.
In total, but not in each of the three categories.
That would be correct. The restricted decreased from twenty-two to twenty-three. Uh, the, a lot of the twenty-two restricted fund balance was the ARPA money that John.
Right, because I could see that those numbers matched.
That thirty-three million dollars moved to another fund and is now included in the net investment in capital assets.
So this was just poorly worded?
Um, it's reporting positive net posi- I think we're just saying it's a, it's, it's in a posi- positive position, not that it increased, but that they are positive numbers. Like there's not a negative fund balance or unrestricted.
Okay, see, this is because I'm not the accountant like Dave. Yes.
And so.
Thank you.
Because that, that's a state requirement that you don't have negative net position or fund balances. And so that that's what that sentence is addressing, is that they're all in a positive position, not necessarily that they.
That they increased. Thank you.
You're welcome.
See, I feel better now. Thank you for helping me understand that.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much. Okay. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comic, public comment will still be taken following presentation of the items, but will be limited to ten minutes. At this time, up to fifteen minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comments on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium. Those participating on Zoom will need to use the raise hand feature to indicate they wish to comment. The chair may choose to alternate between in-person and online commenters. Please begin your comments by stating your name and your city of residence, and you will have two minutes to speak. So anybody who'd like to make public comments, welcome to come up now. We'll have fifteen minutes. That's about seven, eight people.
Hi, uh, my name's Meredith Reed. I am a lifelong resident of Provo. I uh, just wanted to make a quick comment on the recent zero tolerance policy against unleashed dogs in Provo. Um, I understand unleashed dogs and dog waste are a big problem in Provo. As a dog owner, it's been very frustrating to me. Um, and as I think the CAPS presentation explained, this is a people problem. Um, I understand why this policy was put into place because people were injured, but I don't think it's a good solution to this problem. Um, and I want to explain why. Um, as high density housing grows, more dog owners live in places where they don't have fenced backyards to exercise their dogs. Um, responsible dog owners need to train and exercise their dogs to ensure they're well socialized and that they don't pose a risk to others. If there's no place for these dogs to run and play safely, they can develop social problems, making them a bigger risk to the public. Currently, Provo only has one fenced area for unleashed dogs to play. Um, but it is dirty, full of sand that burns dogs' paws in the summer, and it's small enough that dogs become stressed and overwhelmed in the environment. Um, it also doesn't separate small dogs and large dogs, creating higher risk for injury for dogs and owners. Injuries and even the death of a dog have happened in this dog park. Other cities like Spanish Fork and Draper have built larger, cleaner, better kept and safer dog parks that have grass for the dogs to play and where they get less dirty. Um, Provo needs a dog park like this, that's, that's larger and has grass, maybe has a walking trail like Draper does, and it separates large and small dogs for their safety. Um, if a dog park isn't possible, other compromises might be considered like allowing dog owners without fenced backyards to responsibly exercise their dogs uh, by requiring their dogs to pass a citizenship or behavior test before they can be allowed off-leash in public. Um, allowing off-leash dogs at certain times of day or at certain parks. Public parks are often completely empty in the mornings, especially in the winter. Um, but people are being ticketed if they take their dogs and their, the dogs aren't bothering anyone. Could um, could dogs be allowed to run off-leash at these certain times when the parks are not being used by other citizens?
Thank you, Meredith.
Hi, my name is Karina Haag, and I've been a resident of Provo. I've lived in Provo for a total of eight years. Um, I'd like to address the problem with the unleashed dogs and dog waste not being cleaned up. As if uh, the frustration that I have as a responsible dog owner is overwhelming and uh, constantly cleaning up after others. I feel like during COVID, many people made the choice to get dogs as they were spending more time at home, not necessarily realizing what was involved and the amount of work it takes to take, to care for them, properly train them and to clean up after them. Uh, there is now a very large population of dog owners, but no adequate place for us to take our dogs and exercise them safely. Provo has only one dog park. It's not an adequate size and made out of horrible grass and sand, or excuse me, horrible gravel and sand. Is a breeding, breeding ground for germs. My dog and many others begin to cough when they're playing and running around there. Um, so I no longer take him there. I feel like making. I feel like making some exceptions to the rule of off-leash dogs, especially during the winter months when there are next to no people out in the parks in the morning hours, at least during the week, is not an unreasonable request, at least until a better solution could be reached. Perhaps we could have the hours from like six AM to eleven AM during the week when kids are in school to have our dogs off-leash within the parameters that should others show up, that they need to be put back on leash. Or some program where we could show a test of our dog's obedience and then purchase perhaps like a special pass showing we could have them off-leash. The vacant land at the top of Bicentennial Park, I do feel like would make an excellent dog park with just a few minor changes to it. I also wanted just to say thank you for listening to my concerns, and hopefully we could come to a compromise on the zero tolerance off-leash policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Karina.
Hi, my name is Gabby Sabalones. Some of you guys already know me. I'm a Provo resident, and I'm here also to talk about the dog park situation. For me, the, the clear solution to this situation is to have a bigger, better grass dog park, as other cities have done. With mental health awareness, COVID, and more information about the many positive benefits of pet ownership, the number of dogs in Provo is on the rise, many of which are living in town homes and apartments. Lately, Provo's animal control has been cracking down on, on owners who let their dogs off-leash with the new zero tolerance policy and a raised fee from what was, what it was originally from twenty-five dollars to a hundred and fifty dollars, which is more than any moving violation. Karina is a single parent, and that would represent a significant financial strain. The current dog park does not represent a reasonable alternative for the following reasons. It is small. Dogs tend to become more agitated and more likely to be reactive in small spaces, especially when they are filled with other dogs. It's filled with kitty litter. I've known dogs who have gotten eye infections in there. It's not a sanitary place for humans either. There's no alternative for smaller dogs. I'm aware that this issue has been raised in the past and that budgetary concerns have been an issue, but I have noted that there is a new sports park that's being created. So clearly, Provo has funds to spend on parks. If we made the dog park part of that park, or if we allocated the vacant space in Bicentennial Park that touches Lake Canyon, that would be a reasonable option as well. Thank you so much for your time, and we expect to be back over here. Oh, I did want to note too, the second row is all dog owners who've shown up to show their support for this issue.
Thank you, Gabby.
Chair, Council Mayor, I'm, I'm going to ruin the dog run, so I apologize. My name is Brett Fossum, longtime resident of, of, resident of Provo lifelong. I wanted to bring to your attention, if it's, if it's already on the radar and being addressed otherwise, then I apologize, but the crosswalk over on Ninth East and Five Sixty North is extremely problematic. It's dangerous. There are multiple times where I've seen near misses. I've, I've been a paramedic firefighter for a long time, seventeen years, and, and I've seen over the last six months, about seven or eight times where there have been near misses with pedestrians crossing that road. Originally, years ago, when the flags were set up, it was a good idea, but there are better solutions now. I think the lighted crosswalk that we have west of Pioneer Park, which is similar, it's, it's another five-lane road, which Ninth East is a five-lane road, would allow for a safer crossing. And if we somehow put in a, you know, safe haven for pedestrians to cross. But there have been multiple times over the last six months that I've seen near misses with auto, auto pedestrian accidents. I think it's problematic, and I think if it's not being addressed, hopefully you can address it, and if it is being addressed, thank you, but we probably need to get moving on it a little bit quicker on, on that piece. So I appreciate your time and thanks for, for letting me chat. Thanks.
Thank you, Brett. Any more public comment? All right. Next, we have an implied motion on a resolution consenting to the appointment of individuals to various boards and commissions, and this will be presented by Mayor Michelle Cuffusi.
It's just so weird to be up here so much tonight, but we have a lot of business to get done before Christmas break, so thank you for bearing with me. So our first topic of discussion is boards and commissions. So Chairman Kay and Vice Chair Whipple and members of the municipal council, I am recommending the following reappointments to Provo City Boards and Commissions as indicated below, and submit this for the council's advice and consent. Ned Hill, many of you know Ned, he's just a wonderful person. I am recommending Ned be reappointed to a three-and-a-half-year term on the Energy Board ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. Cheryl Taylor, I am recommending Cheryl be reappointed to a three-and-a-half-year term on the Energy Board ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. And, and this last one is a cute little tongan. We love the tongans in the Cuffusi family, and my husband said the Ts are Ds. So William, don't die. I am recommending William be reappointed to a two-and-a-half-year term on the Parks and Recreation Board ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Do you have any questions for me concerning these?
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Mayor. Council discussion. Council Ellsworth.
Yeah, I'll just add that Ned Hill and Cheryl Taylor I've worked with on the Energy Board for about a year now, and they're terrific. They add a lot, and they really want to see Provo grow and improve and support our power and energy systems.
Great, thank you. All right, ready for a vote? We call for, oh, right, Council McKay, yes. Councilor Whipple?
Yes.
Councilor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Councilor Fillmore?
Yes.
Councilor Handley?
Yes.
Councilor Shipley?
Yes.
Councilor Hopin?
Yes.
So as unanimous. All right, next, an implied motion on a resolution consenting to the mayor's appointment of the Justice Court Judge for Provo City. And again, Michelle Cuffusi.
Sorry again, but here we go. I am recommending the following appointment, and this has been a big deal for Provo. It's been, I've met with the council about it, and we're really excited. It's been a unique process. I've learned a lot. We've all learned a lot. This doesn't happen very often. Like I stated earlier, this will be the longest appointment I'll ever put in probably, potentially, because you can become, stay a judge until you're seventy-five years old. So it's really an interesting process that I've been able to experience this past month and a half. So Chairman Kay and Vice Chair Whipple and members of the municipal council, I am recommending the following appointment to the Office of the Court's Judicial Council for Justice Court Judge, and submit this for the council's advice and consent. Stephen H. Schreiner, and Steve, I think you're here. Do you want to come up and stand by, read all these great things and make you feel embarrassed? I'll start reading them because I know we've got a full agenda tonight. Our respected Provo City Attorney Brian Jones said of Steve's deserved selection, "I've had the privilege to work with Steve Schreiner for the last sixteen years. He is a tremendous attorney and an even better person. I believe his thoughtfulness, concern for community, and integrity will make him an excellent judge." So thank you, Brian, for adding that because all of that is true. Steve earned a Juris Doctorate from BYU's J. Rubin Clark Law School in nineteen ninety-five and began his career as an attorney in the Provo City's Attorney's Office, working primarily on prosecutor, as a prosecutor. Steve has been the chief prosecutor since two thousand and seven. During his career with the Provo City Attorney's Office, he has served as president of the Utah Municipal Prosecutor's Association and was a member of the Governor's Council on Driving Under the Influence. From two thousand and three until January two thousand twenty-three, he served as Chair of the Fourth Judicial District Victims Rights Committee and as a member of the Utah Council on Victims of Crime. So I think your wife's here, so let's have her stand because it's always fun to embarrass the spouse. So Steve married his wife, Marnie Nelson, Marne. Oh, I saw that little accent ago now that I'm looking. Marne Nelson, nineteen eighty-nine. They are the parents of five sons. It's funny because Steve played basketball at BYU, and he had a basketball team, so that's fun, and she's just like, yeah, not really, but okay, right? No, that's so great. They are the parents of five sons, two daughters-in-law, and almost seven grandchildren, which is super exciting. So with that said, we will ask for the council's advice and consent on this, and let me just say, just for constituents and folks that are here tonight, he will not be sworn in because I've been told by the state, it's a big deal. You're a big deal now, by the way.
I'm just big, Mayor. I'm just big.
He will have to do, they will do a state advice and consent through the Judge Judicial Commission, and after that, we will do a gowning ceremony. So robing, sorry. Again, it's new language for me.
Down robe.
Yeah, whatever, right? We'll be doing an official ceremony for him, and they even asked me today when I called the state to get direction if he would, has he considered doing a speaking circuit? I'm like, no, I don't think he, he told me no, but they're going to probably push you on that a little. So with that said, we would like to ask for your advice and consent tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, we got a chance to speak and meet with him earlier, and we're excited. All right, council discussion. All right, we'll call for a vote on the implied motion. Councilor Whipple?
Yes.
Councilor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Councilor Fillmore?
Yes, indeed.
Councilor Handley?
Yes.
Councilor Shipley?
Yes.
And Councilor Hopin is excused. Councilor McKay? Yes. So that is unanimous. Thank you.
Congratulations. I'll just stay because I'm on next, I know, again.
All right, a resolution consenting to the mayor's appointment of the Parks and Recreation Director of Provo City, and this will be presented by Mayor Cuffusi.
All right, so Chairman Kay, Vice Chair Whipple, and members of the municipal council. This is an exciting time for Parks and Rec. So where is Doug? Come on up, Doug, and bring your cute wife, Cheryl. Let's go, Cheryl. This is part of being a director's wife. Now you have to be in all these awkward and forward-facing positions. I'll just introduce and read a little bit about how lucky we are. I am recommending a familiar face to be appointed as the Director of Parks and Recreation and submit this for the council's advice and consent. I say this because we watched Doug Robbins serve as Assistant Parks and Recreation Director for eight years as partner of an award-winning team. In fact, the best Parks and Recreation Department in the nation, with Provo earning the National Gold Medal of Excellence, the highest professional accolade in the Parks and Recreation industry. Robbins truly had on-the-job training for his much-deserved director selection. His diverse career before Provo includes management roles such as utility forester, city forester, and parks manager. Doug also played a pivotal role in leading our department team to earn and hold a rare Parks and Recreation Agency accreditation, an accomplishment attempted by only the top two percent of the country's ten thousand agencies. And that is truly impressive. Doug and his wife Cheryl enjoy spending time with their three daughters and their extended families, and when he's not managing award-winning parks projects, rumor has it, and I want to get in on this, you can find him in the kitchen baking sourdough bread. So we are here to ask for your advice and consent.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor? All right, again, we love Doug. We're fully supportive. Any council discussion? Okay, we will call for a vote. Councilor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Councilor Fillmore?
Yes.
Councilor Handley?
Yes.
Councilor Shipley?
Yes.
Councilor Hopin is excused. Councilor McKay, yes. Councilor Whipple?
Yes.
And again, that's unanimous.
Congratulations, Doug and Cheryl. So when a director's put in, we do a couple of things. We let Doug speak for a moment. Would you like to say anything? Okay, great.
Well, I'm just really briefly very grateful for this opportunity. I work with a great team in Parks and Recreation, best team we've ever had, and we are always striving to do better, and we're looking forward to a very positive future going forward. Sure appreciate the support of the council and our team, and Mayor Cuffusi. Thank you so much.
Another fun piece is now he gets to be sworn in, so we're excited about this, all the like fun things. So come on over.
I, Doug Robbins, do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Just wanted to acknowledge real quick that we have some scouts out here today, and I think it's awesome that you guys are here to see a public meeting. Remember to vote when you're old enough. All right, next, we have an implied motion on a resolution approving the appropriation of twenty-eight thousand dollars in the general fund, and this will be presented by Tara Riddle, our real property administrator.
Good evening, council. In March of two thousand twenty-two, Provo City was asked to be the second city in the state of Utah to participate in the My Hometown Initiative. One thing in particular has changed since we started. One of our community liaisons for the South Freedom Neighborhood retired recently. And so this evening, I'd like to announce that his replacement has been selected, and so Kendra Herbert, who's one of our code enforcement officers, who you recognized a couple of months ago as the employee of the month, will be taking over that neighborhood, and we're excited to start working with her. At the beginning of this project, the council approved the administration's request for an appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars to start the funding for the initiative. And thanks to private donations and the initial funding, we've been able to get through nearly twenty months from the initial allocation. We are now requesting twenty-eight thousand to facilitate the continued operations of the initiative until June of next year, and then we'll request funding during the normal budget process. In your packet, you have a breakdown of all the expenses and donations that have been received thus far. I'm happy to report that we've been really good stewards of the funding that we've received, and I'm happy to report that the Provost's My Hometown Initiative has been extremely successful. We are being recognized as the example of how to run the program effectively, and several of the other participating cities were coming to us for advice on good policy and procedures. During the presentation on this subject during the study session, I was given the task to look at a couple of other neighborhoods that we could actually expand the initiative. We are in the process of working with our partners with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints to identify neighborhoods that we think could be potential candidates. So I'll be coming back to you in the next couple of months to report on where we end up with that. Steve Bartholomew, who's a student at BYU. Steve Bartholomew, who's a student at BYU, put together a video that I shared during the study session, but I'd actually have to share that again just for the benefit of the audience. So we'll go ahead and play that now.
So the partnership where it all began was with City of Provo and Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, they didn't want it to be a welfare program. They didn't want it to be dependent on city or on them. They really put a lot of thought into it. They wanted the people in the area so that they could work with their neighbors. And the concept of that, of getting outside, getting to see their neighbors that they hadn't had or maybe hadn't had an opportunity to, working in their yards to uplift their homes. And that was the whole vision.
We teach three language classes. We teach a basic computer. Our biggest class is English.
We came to Provo because we knew that we needed our help, just like we needed our help. The English helped our family a lot. But for us, it's a secret that we have to communicate, you know, for example. For us, it's easy to...
When a child went networking, they put me in service. And I said to my boss, Gary, I'm starting to study. I'm in a very good teacher. The first day when I take the class, they say something I forget. You're gonna make a mistake. You don't take this mistake. Prove your English. They changed me one chip inside of my life. They said, okay, I'm gonna start. They want to start to talk in English. This class made me arise my life. And I'm starting to do my own company.
So I love the... That's because it shows power.
One Saturday, Martin, one... Neighbors identify other neighbors. Or... Here for the next year. People... Human resource. Wide variety of volunteers. The hope of beautifying neighborhood.
So we have projects going tent in this neighborhood, right in this neighborhood. Then we've also got a big National Day of Service project where we're cleaning up along the river trail in partnership with the city. About 400 homes there. So total, we're expecting to have about 60, 67 homes here. Are My Hometown projects.
It's gonna save us, I don't know how many men, probably almost probably close to a thousand. So, and that's just, it helps improve the parks and it helps me personally because I actually take care of these parks and I see the difference that it's making. We just had a big social activity last week where we had a thousand. The city erected a bandstand. Two different bands. Like really awesome. Neighbors come together.
And I see too many people over there. Yes, they just make a lot of teeth. See your friends or your companions. For... If you like, so. Miracle.
So I'd like to stress at this point that the success of the My Hometown Initiative has been largely in part because of our volunteers that we have, have given many, many hours. So at this point, it's our recommendation that the council consider appropriate, excuse me, approving the resolution to appropriate $28,000 of fund balance from the general fund for the continued operation of the My Hometown Initiative through June of 2024.
Thanks Tara. We'd like to open up this... Well, first of all, are there any questions for Tara? All right, we'll open this up, item up for public comment. If there's any public comment on this item. All right, seeing none, we'll go to council discussion. Councillor Ellsworth.
Thanks. We discussed this in our work meeting a couple of weeks ago and in the summertime, I visited My Hometown a few times and invited my colleagues on tours. They're doing terrific work and it's, there's so much momentum and energy there. And it's just so many agencies and organizations that are collaborating and overlapping and synchronizing that it's just a very worthy cause in a part of town that I think really appreciates it and it's relatively a small amount of money and I'm excited to support this.
Councillor Fillmore.
Thank you. I just want to say amen to Shannon. This is a terrific program. It does enormous amount of good. Every time I've been over to the chapel where they use as their headquarters, I see, you know, 100-plus people buzzing around and they're learning the computers, they're learning to play piano, learning English. It's, I mean, it's such, we get such a big return on our investment. So I'm fully supportive and looking forward to expanding it to a couple more neighborhoods.
All right, we'll take a vote on the implied motion. Councillor Fillmore.
Yes.
Councillor Handley.
Yes.
Councillor Shipley.
Yes.
Councillor Hoppen is excused, councillor McKay, yes. Councillor Whipple.
Yes.
And councillor Ellsworth.
Yes.
And that is unanimous. Thank you Tara. All right, next is a resolution, an implied motion on a resolution approving an interlocal agreement regarding funding for the 820 North Bridge construction. And this was presented by our city engineer Gordon Haight.
Thanks. The city has been awarded funds in 2025 to redo the 820 North Bridge. The funds are about $12.7 million. We, we can use those funds for the public outreach process, the design and construction. So the, the item just before the council tonight is to enter an interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County to be able to start doing the design, the public outreach and the studies in 2024. And then we can be reimbursed in 2025, the funds that, that we spend so that we're ready to construct, reconstruct the bridge in 2025. The bridge is very deficient. The sidewalks are horribly unsafe. We've had a fatality about a year and a half ago through the bridge. The lighting, vertical, horizontal curves are bad and the trail underneath the bridge is not very inviting. So there's a lot of improvements that need to be done there. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Gordon? Councillor Hoppen.
Do we have a design, concept design for the bridge yet?
So there was a concept design that was submitted when we submitted this to MAG about three years ago.
Okay. Some of the stir about the design, as I'm sure you are aware, is that kind of the, the direction of the bridge might indicate, might be indicative of eventually widening 820, 800 slash 820 North, which would, you know, lead to removing homes and such. And so I wanted to know if you could speak to that? If, if there is a plan around that yet?
Design right now is not necess... We don't have a preferred design. It was just one that was put together in order to get the funding. So at this point, there is no set design or alignment or width. What's happening is where MAG has put together a whole new traffic model for the Provo and the Valley. We're right now going to look at it, review all the numbers. In the transportation master plan, it specifically states along this segment and this bridge that it's a collector road, but the width and the design of it would be done after future studies. And so that's a requirement that we have to do. Sometimes we look at the big picture, but just to kind of a background about a year ago, the mayor invited me and some other staff to walk along the neighborhood, meet with the residents up there. So she's direct us to have a very robust dialogue with the residents, with the neighborhood, with the citizens. And that's what we plan to do once we get funded on this project is to... It'll take us a month or two to get a design. We'll probably have six or seven alignments laid out. We're going to look at a lot of different options and we'll have pros and cons for all those. But right now, there is not one that we would say is a selected concept that we would go with.
Okay, so at this point, we're just determining if we want the money to rebuild the bridge and that conversation can follow then.
Yeah, so tonight, the only thing we're doing is the money's going to be awarded to us in 2025. This allows us to spend city funds through 2024 and they get reimbursed in 2025 for the funds. So that's, that's pretty much the only question that's before the council tonight.
Okay, so it will happen relatively quickly then, the moving forward with it.
Yeah, we'll, as soon as we pass this resolution, we'll immediately engage. We'll start doing RFPs. We'll select consultants. We'll start doing the design. We'll set up a schedule of meetings with neighborhoods and with residents to start talking to them about the different designs and alignments that can be considered as we go forward.
Thank you Gordon.
Councillor Handley.
So it's just follow up on this to make sure I'm understanding correctly everything. If, so, I mean, I think that the anxiety I had about this item was I don't want to make a decision. I mean, I'm, I'm not in favor of widening the road, but I don't want to make that decision now either. I don't want the pressure of saying you're going to approve this bridge and you're going to make the decision about how wide the road is going to be into the future. So when you say there are alternatives and different designs you're looking at, some of those designs I'm hoping would include not expanding the road?
So, so right now, everything's on the table. We're not saying what the width is or the alignment. And so what we intend to do is do actual studies, come back to the public, show what we have found and get comments. So today, there's not a width. In other words, it doesn't necessarily have to expand. It doesn't have to be wider, shorter. We're going to look at all those issues in the future.
So I guess what I'm wanting to get a sense of is, is, is if we approve the interlocal agreement tonight, that doesn't, I, I, I don't want the, the horses to leave the barn in the sense that this suddenly sets in motion a process that we can't come back and say we, we don't, you know, we've done the study or we've talked to the neighborhoods. We've evaluated it as a council and we've decided we're not pursuing that option. And suddenly we find out we can't. We're sort of obligated to continue forward down that road, so to speak. Is that, I, I just want some reassurance that that's not the case.
Once you approve this funds, we're going to do our due diligence and there's going to be a public process to figure out the full width. So whether we approve the funds today or in 2025, the intent is to do that. If something's going to happen. I don't think anybody agrees the bridge shouldn't be replaced. It's the discussion of what the width should be. Today, you're not making any decision on that, but you're starting the process to make a decision on that. I don't know if that...
Well, I, I, I hate to be so picky about this. I'm just, I do not want to...
You're not selecting the three lane, a five lane, seven lane, eight lane. You're picking...
So I'm not preventing the possibility or making it that the, that the road would remain the same if I vote yes for this tonight.
You are not making that decision tonight and that decision couldn't be made and we haven't. We're not ready to recommend a decision. So you're not getting a recommendation on the number of lanes. You're not getting a recommendation on the alignment. Those things are not done, so you can't make that. I wouldn't recommend any decision on that until you've seen all the data. I haven't even seen it. We haven't even started it yet. So but once the process goes forward, a decision will be made. And that decision will be made hopefully in the next six, eight months. So we got a full design and ready to go bid.
And, and when, and that decision would come back to us?
I believe, I don't see a process, you know, certainly that's something could happen, but I don't see that as part of the process unless we make it part of the process. So I see the city council is the policymakers. You've given us the transportation master plan. You do the funding. And then after that, the administration's going to go through and take the policies and funding you give us and follow those, those, those steps. So you can make those policy... Maybe I need Brian to tell me a little bit more about this. But right now, it, it doesn't, the process doesn't require to come back to the city council for a vote.
But if you were, presumably you, you're going to say, say this study in, in the judgment of those who do the study and you look at the data and you say we need to widen the road, then you're going to come back to ask us for money to widen the road. I mean, you're not gonna...
You're going to be the ones that control the budget.
Yeah, okay. I, I, I guess, so maybe a, one last follow-up question is if, if we were to say no to the interlocal agreement, how, what happens to the bridge? I mean, we need to, we need to replace the bridge.
Right. So if you said no tonight, we would probably get busy on other projects. We would probably bring, come back to you in 2025 to appropriate the funds to start the design process then. So it's just, when do you want us to start the study, the public process and the design? We're seeing that this bridge is a critical safety issue. And we don't want it to stay there one minute longer than it absolutely has to. So, so tonight, you're not making a decision of what the width will be. That decision will be made later through some public process that we're going to go through that will outline. That decision will be made here with the city following the prop, the policies that are set by the council and the public input that we get. And then we will go forward with the funds that we get from the county and from MAG.
Okay.
I don't know if that was too bureaucratic of an answer or if that answered your question.
Councillor Fillmore.
Gordon, let me take another stab at that.
All right.
Isn't the essence of our decision tonight whether we're willing to accept $11 million roughly of outside money to fix a very unsafe bridge? And that's the heart of it. I mean, other things may follow down the road, but we're focused on the bridge tonight. Has nothing to do immediately with any widening of the road.
All right, any other questions for Gordon? All right. Any other questions for Gordon? All right. Thank you, Gordon.
All right, thank you.
We will move this item to public comment. Please keep in mind that you'll have two minutes and if you could please state your name and your city of residence.
Hey there. As you know, Kat Lindford, lived here in Provo. I just, I'm going to read a couple of statements that are in the transportation master plan as it is right now from 2020. Public involvement was a key part of developing the TNP. Provo residents have a vested interest in the future mobility in their community. As users of the current transportation network in Provo, residents also have firsthand experience with mobility challenges that exist. Thus, the public are important stakeholders to include in the process and who possess valuable insights. Whether direct or indirect, public involvement was of crucial importance in developing this plan. Provo citizens directly influenced the TNP through two open house meetings that occurred at the Provo Rec Center in 2018. And also, I think it was, I'll have to scroll down, 2019. At these, and this is from the transportation master plan. At this very well attended meeting, approximately 100 community members provided 184 comments. Of those comments, it's section A point two point one. General opinion of comments received during November open house, 69% negative. Another major priority running through the comments was traffic safety. Almost two thirds of the comments mentioned vehicle traffic related safety concern. So this is based on public comment that was given to write the transportation master plan. With the 69% negative approval, it also went through for all of the, the road improvements. Public involvement is crucial, but yet 69% negative stated that they didn't agree with the statements.
Thanks, Kat.
Hey, Dylan Sundrich, I live in Provo. I just want to say that I appreciate all of you as a council. Clearly you guys are taking this process very carefully and listening, it sounds like, to concerns of the residents that live along this road and use it. I would just like to say that I am in favor of a bridge replacement here. There, the sidewalks don't really exist on this bridge right now. The bike lanes get very narrow. The under crossing below the bridge for the River Trail is not good. So all of those need to be addressed. But I just hope that as part of that process, you guys take into consideration that as part of widening or rebuilding the bridge, that it's not just rebuilt with cars in mind, that there's space provided for pedestrians and cyclists that use 800 North and the River Trail every day. And then also this that you would keep in mind that a safer road isn't always a wider and straighter road. Sometimes curves and narrower lanes are good in that they incentivize drivers to slow down, to pay better attention. And so I hope that in directing engineering, when they are choosing a design, that you guys take that into consideration and look for the bridge that would be safest for everyone and not the one that will get people from A to B in their car fastest. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dylan.
I had to write it down because I'll get emotional. Hi, Provo family. My name is Jordan Thurston. I live at 1089 West 820 North. As the new bridge over the river becomes reality, I hope and pray we can look at a and voice our opinion on how to widen the ridge as that will correlate to the whether or not 820 North will be widened. We would like to take this idea to widen the street off the master plan. Yes, the bridge needs to be replaced, but we need to help in keeping our homes and keeping the city safer for pedestrians. We li- we love where we live and want our children to enjoy this amazing city. I speak in behalf of many concerned neighbors who very much want to not, do not want to lose their homes. Thank you, Catrice and Gary Garrett for responding to my emails. But overall, it's not worth it to save 30 seconds of a commute and lose millions of dollars and millions of homes. Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan. Any other comments?
I'm Van Lindford. I live on 820 North. The problem with this is our safety is the number one issue. We actually just two weeks ago, right next to our house, right in front, had a guy come right in. Our neighbor was going to get out of his car and smashed it during going 45 miles an hour. I live on the street, I've been there 25 years. Straight road is not the thing as elsewhere said, is it Rachel? You, Whipple, sorry. About Third South, the straight road. It makes you want to go fast. It's straight and the people down our road are going 50 plus. I mean, I stand out there and yell and they think I'm a complete nut job, but it is unbelievable. I've lived there, I've seen it, I see it every day. There's cops there, they could give tickets every day, all day long. They can give 5,000 tickets a day. I mean, it's just like that. But we've brought them down as we had the meeting with everybody and stood on the bridge. And I showed them the direction and what this thing is doing. And I said, this little thing that you want to get rid of, this little deterrent is a speed check. You don't go on it, you're going out in the river, which we've seen cars go in the river. That's happened. The accident, as far as the girl that got killed, had nothing to do with the bridge. It's probably the way it turned. That's on the east side of the bridge. That is a fatality, but it wasn't due to the bridge. It wasn't due to our road. It's off the side. It's a side road, which is a horrible turn that they've made you not go left, that you cannot make that turn. It is, and on the other side, it's the same way because it's a blind turn. But I hope you guys would take in about the safety and this road and the wideness. We don't need an I-215 and we don't need another great big commuter road. We need to make this so it fits the community, it's safe and everybody can travel and it does all things that we needed to be done. Thank you.
Thanks, Val.
Good evening. I'm Aaron Scavland. I live in the River Grove neighborhood here in Provo. I am in favor of replacing this bridge, but not in favor of designing it in such a way with its width and its positioning to enable the road to be widened. Those who have spoken tonight are here representing residents from all across the city who wanted to be here. But who are opposed to the proposed widening of 800, 820. This is not, though, just about 800 and 820 North. Widening this street will not only adversely impact the residents who live along the street, many of whom will lose their homes and the surrounding neighborhoods. It will also undermine the quality of life of people throughout the city by flooding our community with more cars, more demand for parking and more pollution. Those opposed to widening the street are not just a bunch of nimby's who don't want a development to happen in their backyard, even though some will lose their very backyards as well as their homes. To the contrary, many of us welcome growth. We want smart growth, not sprawl. And we want, we, we don't want sprawl and we want an end to a transportation paradigm that encourages sprawl, that prioritizes convenience, the convenience of drivers, many of whom come from outside of our community over the qual- over our quality of life, our safety, our homes, and even the very lives of Provo residents. We want more people to live in Provo. We want people to have the freedom to choose about how they could, how they move around and, and to be able to do so safely in our community. But as long as we prioritize trying to relieve congestion, those things will be undermined. And in the end, thanks to induced demand, we will get, in the end, more congestion, more dangerous streets.
Thanks, Aaron. Any more comments? All right, we will now close public comment and open this up for council discussion. Counselor Hoben?
It's going to be a long one, so I'm just going to jump right to a motion. I'll make a motion that we postpone this until we have a bridge design that we like and thus know how much funding this is going to take. It seems like it's difficult to say we need X amount of dollars when we don't have a design to know exactly what that will cost. So I am supportive of replacing the bridge. I think it is a safety hazard. But I think we need more information before we decide to move forward with the funding.
Counselor Whipple?
I'm wondering if I could ask Gordon a question about that. So my understand-
Do we need a second before we move to discussion or?
Is there a second?
I'll second it for the sake of discussion and advancing the process.
All right. So from what you said earlier, part of the point of allocating this money is so that we can design the bridge. We can't design the bridge if we don't allocate the money because we won't have money for it.
So we do not have a budget item for it. However, if we were to spend money now without this resolution, any money we spend on the design, we could not be reimbursed. We would just have to eat the cost. So we could go forward with the project, but right now we don't have a funding source or we likely wouldn't. And so if this doesn't get approved tonight, we could do some slight things internally, but we wouldn't do a robust design because we're not, we don't, we didn't put a funding budget together for this. And, and we could come back in July when we do the budget again to try to see if there's money.
Isn't part of getting a design, doing a study, so that the study can help inform the design?
Again, could be reimbursed if we approve this tonight. So we, we wanted to get some outside consultants to help us with some things. So we can do some things internally, but we don't have the time and the capacity to do a lot of the items in terms of the structural design and some of the traffic analysis. So.
So how much exactly do we anticipate it will cost to do the design and all of the public discussion and input? Like what?
What's a budget put together?
For that part, yes.
I would expect the design and the consultant services would be probably around $750,000 in that range to a million somewhere plus or minus. That survey, geotech work, a lot of different things would be going into it. So anyway, that, that's what we anticipate. The project estimate is about, is, we have $13 million total. But the estimate's a little bit low that, below that right now.
And that project estimate includes that approximate 720,000 dollars?
It includes all the design, the environmental, the, all the stuff we got to do. We have stream alteration permits. We have to do some things with the county and the state and the feds. So there's a number of steps we have to take. And those all affect the design and the cost.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Handley.
Sorry, just to keep, keep following up on that. So, but in regard to Counselor Hoben's concerns, if we approve this and that means we can get that money reimbursed, but it doesn't lock us into any particular amount that we're going to need? I mean, we won't know exactly what the project is, is going to cost until a design is settled on, right? So it could mean that, and I don't know what the difference between a bridge that accommodates a wider road versus one that doesn't in terms of a potential price. But it wouldn't matter because we would be asking for the project budget for the design that we decide on, correct?
So, so we have appropriated, so what's been awarded to us is the $13 million. That's with a 6.77% match from MAG. So, so let me just maybe outline the process. Maybe this gives you some comfort.
And if I could just, the one question I'd like to have answered in, in your explanation that maybe goes back to my anxiety earlier. Is there anything in that award that says this award is contingent on the fact that we're assuming you're building a wider bridge or anything like that? Is there anything that ties us to?
A wider bridge?
A wider bridge.
Let me, let me answer that question, but let me answer another question first. So what's going to happen is if you approve this tonight, we would start spending money, design money in July, when you do the budget, we would put in the next fiscal year budget, receiving this $12 million dollars from the county and MAG and allocating it for this project. The council has full control of that, whether we accept that money, what we allocate it, what we do. If we elect not to get that money, we won't get reimbursed for the work we did. You'll have, we'll have to fund that through some other kinds of means. But at that point, you control the full budget decision because that document is going to come to you. Once you approve it, then we will spend the money. And again, that's in your, well, you probably approve it a month before that, but the money be, the budget becomes golden in July 1. So that's really your opportunity to weigh in from a legislative standpoint. Now I'm going to talk about the width of the road. There has been studies, when I got here, there was a study done in 2016 that the city, UDOT and MAG looked at 820. The modeling that was done said that the road should be widened. The anxiety that you're hearing from the residents has been from years of studies saying this road should be widened due to the traffic congestions and looking at the future and what's going on. So we're taking all those studies and setting them aside. And we're going to run brand new studies with the brand new numbers that have been put together. And we're going to look at it with fresh eyes. We're going to be having the public look at those things. What does it do to the traffic if you eliminate this, if you keep it smaller, if you, what, what's going to happen? The future is very challenging to see. We're going to be as creative as we can to look at all the options. We're going to be meeting with residents. This will not be done in a closet. This will have a lot of publicity. I suspect you will hear about it more than maybe you want to. But you're going to get an opportunity to hear about this regularly. We're going to be meeting with residents that are affected by this and your constituents are going to be talking to you about each one of these meetings. You'll be invited to them. So you'll see the full process and how we get to a number. The number of lanes, the alignment and the design. Today just starts the process. Again, if we, if we're not funded, we're not going to spend the funds. That's kind of a rule I got, but we'll stop there.
I'm sorry, but I'm still not hearing an answer to my question. So is there, is this money contingent upon the understanding that this road is going to be widened? Are we, it all obligate? Because if we are, I'm not going to vote for it. I need to, I need a really clear understanding of that.
Let's tell you that answer. I do not, I personally do not think it's, there's anywhere I've seen written that says it has to be a five lane road or it can't be a three lane road. I don't know any place that says that. If we look at the numbers and you go through a process, it could be a three lane road.
Okay, thank you.
I've related-
Counselor Fillmore.
Excuse me. Gordon, if we were to vote no and turn down this $13 million grant, is that gone forever?
No, so today it's only to, so it's gone forever a year from today. So a year from now, we'll be trying to collect the money from MAG. This only allows us to be reimbursed if we spend money today. So this doesn't collect the funds. If we turn down the money a year from now, then the money is gone and we'd have to reapply at a future date.
All right. I mean, the reason I ask, I sense a consensus of council and with our audience, that we've got a dangerous bridge that needs to be replaced. We go, we go that far. The issue that seems to be troubling people is whether or not we're committing to a road expansion and you're saying no. There's no commitment to do that. And as you well know, that whole project is a little bit iffy to begin with because if it ever were to happen, is a little bit iffy to begin with because if it ever were to happen, you've got a massive expense to widen that road all the way to a new intersection with I-15 and bridge over the railroad tracks. That that funding is no sure thing. But the very least, we've got to repair a dangerous bridge for the benefit of cars, bikes and pedestrians, right?
Yes, and this is a bridge that we're going to anticipate that's going to be in our city for 70 years. So if you think about the bridge, you know, we're we're replacing this bridge. When they built that, they felt the sidewalks were adequate and it was safe enough for that time. And we see they're a little short sighted. I hate criticizing somebody in the past because I wasn't there for the decisions. If you look at the sidewalk going over University Bridge, it's going to be replaced in 2026, I think. That those sidewalks are woefully undersized. It's terribly scary if you are a bike to go across that. So again, people did not see the future clearly. So we want to make sure that we see the future because $10 million doesn't come around very often or $13 to build, replace a bridge. And so when you do it, we want to do it right. We want to have everything in front of us. What what is the future? And again, it's challenging to see that. And we're going to have to make some assumptions, but we want everyone to know what those assumption are, what those assumptions are and what what that means for that bridge.
It seems to me to be a fairly simple matter. Let's take the money. Let's get alternative designs for a bridge. We'll look at those alternatives when it comes, but why? Why turn our backs on $700,000 that we can't get back to at least take a look at the designs? Because everyone knows we've got to replace the bridge. So why not?
Okay, do we have to take a vote on the motion?
Think there's a vote that needs-
I suppose I need to make a substitute motion. That motion would be that we we approve this request and we secure the $13 million subsidy. We move forward with engineering to give us some alternative designs to look at and consider. But let's let's save three quarters of a million dollars for the city by so doing.
Would that just be the regular implied motion?
Sorry, I gotta turn my microphone on. Well, I mean, it's the same as the implied motion, but an implied motion is not a formal motion. So I think it is in order to make the motion. Therefore, we need a second.
I will second. Alright, we will take a motion on the implied motion, which is a resolution approving-
Not on the implied motion, but on on Councilor Fillmore's motion.
On Councilor Fillmore's motion. Yes, let's do some discussion. Councilor Hoben.
I guess I view it as we have a year to still capture those funds. So a lot can be done in a year. We could come back in a few months and approve this if we needed to. I guess if we're gonna put some money out of pocket, but we're going to recoup 13 million, I I would be supportive of trying to find a way to fund this in next year's budget. And get some get as much done as we can in that time and then recoup the 13 million and whatever we have spent up to that point.
Whatever we spend doesn't count towards the percentage. We have to match the free money, just to be clear. Counselor Shipley.
I was just gonna clarify that. So my understanding is that whatever we spend on the bridge before we do this vote is going to be out of pocket. It's not going to get refunded. So is that is that accurate?
That is my understanding that anything we do before this, we we don't get refunded for. We could bring this motion back another day, like Councilman Hoben said, but we probably want you to let us know when you want that back. But we're thinking to start now on the design, but we didn't want to start in earnest until we knew we're going to get reimbursed for the funds. We felt that was in the best interest of the city's financial situation to do that way.
Counselor Handley.
Yeah, I want to just speak on behalf of Councilor Fillmore's motion and say that you know, I think the urgency of the bridge merits moving forward. And I think saving that money merits moving forward now and approving the interlocal agreement. I'll only express my vehement concern that in the last iteration of the transportation master plan that did describe a widened 820, 800 North, it was a $70 million project, which you know, I hope that's also part of the studies that we're looking at and we don't just look at the numbers and efficiencies issues about car transportation, but we weigh seriously what it means, even if we call it free money, because some of that or a lot of it comes from the federal government. That is a ridiculous amount of money to spend on a widened road, and that's not even to mention the cost to all the homes along the road. So it were, you know, it's just staggering to me. And so I that's why I'm just, you know, I don't want us to commit to that in any way, shape or form. And if I'm still on the council when that vote comes back, I'm going to be voting against a widened road, but I do want this bridge. And I'm certainly willing to get the funding to get going on it and study it properly. And I appreciate Mr. Haight's reassurances about the process and I and I do hope the public will remain engaged and that we'll we'll be able to study these issues carefully together.
Any more discussion? Counselor Whipple.
So I I understand that the considerations that go into making these decisions change over time, how much weight you give to different things, that there are changes in trends in traffic engineering and city planning and things like that. That just moving cars quickly and efficiently is perhaps not the best and highest good. And it shouldn't be given the top party, you know, so much more weight. And I I hope that those changing understandings of what's actually good for communities and safe movement of people through communities will be part of the the discussions and everything. I don't know, but I think it's possible that because these things are shifting, perhaps the recommendation from three years ago would not be the same recommendation that we get when we study it now. But what I would want is and I don't know if I can even get this. I don't know if this is a reasonable thing to ask for, but an assurance that of all the options that were given, not all of the options say this has to be five lanes, right? I don't want to go through a public input thing and be given an illusion of choice and an illusion of having a voice.
Government's great at giving illusions. So I intend to make this as clear and as creative as we can make this. We are, I am particularly sensitive to what we're doing to the residents in this neighborhood. It it has been very hard to have a red line going down the center of your road that's been adopted, that's there. That that to me would be stress enough. And and I get that. So I think we would like to weigh all the issues. We're not here to predetermine on anything. So I told our staff, no one's going to say anything about any size of road till we've started the public process. We're going to have seven or eight options that are going to be extremely diverse, extremely different from each other that are going to allow people to weigh in and get good public feedback. I suspect some people will be more or less happy with different solutions, but let's start the process. And hopefully by July, we're in a really good place that everybody has seen a good process. Or we're going to get some good criticism back for not doing a good process. And let's see what comes out of it. And let's see if we felt like we've addressed or commented or made considerations for all the issues that need to be looked at.
Counselor Hoben.
Last comment or question, I promise.
That's okay.
So it's my understanding that MAG money isn't necessarily a use it or lose it. For example, you know, there's a bucket of MAG money that's distributed to municipalities each year. And so we have the opportunity, let's say we had another worthy project that were, you know, we were looking at that was going to cost us $13 million. We could go to MAG and apply to have that project covered in exchange for not covering this project. Now, I know there's no guarantees. We get the money. So I guess I just want to clarify that it's not necessarily that we're never going to get that 13 million. There might be another worthy project that MAG would look at and say, okay, if you don't want to do the bridge, you can do this for and and offset the costs for XYZ project. But you're going to cover the cost of the bridge yourselves or or whatever it might be, right? Is that correct?
So so if we if we decided not to use the money, we we could notify MAG and say, we're not going to do this project. The money would go back and MAG would open up the process to reallocate the money. Provo would not be the only city in the running for that money. So there's no guarantee. We we would get it, but it's not like the money goes away. Somebody's going to get the money.
Right, okay. Thanks.
Any more discussion? Counselor Ellsworth.
So when do you think it would come back to the council?
So there is not a process for the council to vote on the design. That that's not a part of what what we see as the process. What would come back to the council is budget item. If there's a a need to amend a general plan, those kind of things are things that you would vote on, not necessarily a design, the those kind of things. You would vote on a policy and funding. The only thing I see coming back to you right now is a fund is the budget. And so we'll try to do that within the budget year and you'll see that in drafts and then vote on it in about six months or five months.
To clarify, the public process for this for this design might be in the summer in June?
So I would anticipate. So right now, we've kind of put together some tentative schedules that we would try to have some preliminary designs and ideas and alignments put together by the end of January. We would vet them internally, try to do a real good, robust understanding. So probably in February, we'd start meeting with residents. We'd set up meetings with the community, neighborhood, community councils. We would start not a formal, but kind of informal reaching out to everybody. And then once we have those comments, we'd probably set up some a formal public hearing to let people see what we got from everybody and and that would probably be going on through the the spring into summer and and then we would be going into a hard design in the summer with the structure and the alignments and so forth, the utilities and all that kind of work.
Okay, thanks for that. I would just add to the public that's concerned about this that a good strategy might be putting a calendar reminder on March 1 and put a little note to yourself to contact Gordon Haight or contact the city council, get an update on the public process, make sure that you're involved and participating and remembering that this process is occurring, just because sometimes we get busy and forget.
Yeah, we'll we'll do, we'll try to be very, very diligent in outreach. We're intending as part of that process to hire a PR firm that's going to help us make sure we're scheduling meetings, that we're doing clear outreach with all the different media. So people are aware of meetings and other kinds of things as we're going forward with that.
Thanks, Gordon. Any more discussion? Counselor Whipple.
Yeah, I like the idea that we're politicians and not engineers, so we don't get final design say over a bridge. I don't want that responsibility. And I like the idea of moving forward this now because we already have a substantial amount of public engagement and interest from the neighbors. And by moving ahead with this now, we have a good sense that they will continue to be involved, that they won't lose their momentum in speaking out to to protect what they care about for their neighborhood. So I'm I'm glad that we've got an active, engaged citizenry here on this issue.
Right, are we ready to vote? Alright, we'll do a vote on Counselor Fillmore's motion. Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Shipley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben.
No.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore.
Yes.
And that passes 6-1. Alright, next, an implied motion on a resolution approving appropriation of $3,659,000 in the Engineering CIP Fund. And a $3,134,000 inter-fund loan from the Energy Fund to the Engineering CIP Fund. And this will be presented by John Borget.
Thank you, Chairman McKay and the Honorable Counsel. I would just mention that we had a discussion on this in the work session a couple of weeks ago or about a month ago. It's been a month since we had our last meeting, but let's just kind of walk through it briefly. We go to the next slide. So the proposal, there's some infrastructure that surrounds the sport park, specifically water, storm drain. And then transportation or roads and sidewalk infrastructure. And the total is 4.5 million. The water and storm drain costs are just going to are being paid for out of those specific funds. The other, the transit, the 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 road infrastructure is what we're asking to be appropriated today. And the funding source for that would be basically impact fees, the the county highway transit tax for the current year as well as an inter-fund loan. The inter-fund loan would be for 3.134 million. It would be over 10 years and the annual principal payment would be 313,400. And it would be a variable rate and the loan would be done through energy. And that we've got 5.25, just for example, but that that would adjust monthly based on the rate that would be on that loan. We go to the next slide. This just shows a picture of the of the site. Go to the next slide. And this, this is an example of the loan on, and this funny, this would be paid back from forecasted revenues of this county option highway tax. And so as you can see, we're assuming that we would have 2% increase in revenues, which is a conservative estimate. And then you can see the the principal payment each month as well as a projected interest rate. And then it does show that there would still be available for other projects from that county option highway transit tax of roughly 2.2 to 2.8 million through the, over the 10-year period, which Gordon and his team uses those funds for road infrastructure and important things needed throughout the city. We go to the next slide. Just mentioning to you that we're really careful. We do have some inter-fund loans in the city and that's the there's a state code that basically specifies how they need to be followed. And so we just mentioned that the road loan needs to be in writing. It needs to specify the terms and conditions, which we've included in the resolution. And it just lists the the specific things there. And I would just mention that we're meeting all those requirements. We go to the next slide. And then just to let you know, as far as inter-fund loans go and specifically here, we did have a conversation with Travis Ball about this inter-fund loan and he he did bring it up with the Energy Advisory Board. I would mention that Provo has a good track record of paying those loans back. And we treat in finance, we try to treat those inter-fund loans just like debt, other debt, making sure that we're making those payments based on the agreement. And the other thing that's been good is that it has given us, the inter-funds loans have given us the ability to to do critical projects throughout the city. And as a city as a whole, we're saving interest money. And then the specific fund, for example, energy here is still getting the same rate they would have got had they not done the loan. Go to the next slide. This just shows what we currently have. We currently have three inter-fund loans with energy. One was for the workday implementation costs. It was done in 2020, a five-year loan. We have airport property purchases, which is a 10-year loan that we did in 2020 for 4.9 million. And then we have the airport terminal loan, which was done in '21 for 9.1 million. We go to the next slide. I can just kind of show you where we're at. With the workday implementation costs, there's only one year left, so that loan started at 2.184 million. It's now 458,000. That loan will be paid off in July. And so we've been, we've met that schedule just as we agreed to. If you go to the next slide, this just shows the airport property purchase loan. This was to purchase some property adjacent to- adjacent to the airport. We're coming up on our fourth year. We've made the first three payments right on schedule and we'll come back to the council to make the payment, uh, in the January, February timeframe. So we've met that schedule. And if you go to the next loan, um, which is the airport terminal loan, this was based on timing, uh, from Mag. Interestingly enough, we've been talking about Mag funding associated with this, uh, with this bridge. Uh, this was money for, that was, that Mag approved for the terminal expansion and construction. And we knew that we were going to get the money from Mag, but we had to wait till the proper years. And so, um, right now, we've already, we've recently just paid four million off on that loan. The plan is we're going to pay off the balance in the January, February timeframe. So once we're done here, we will have, we'll be in the fourth year on the airport property purchase loan. And then we'll have this new loan that the council approves that we're talking about. So we've, um, we intend and plan on meeting the schedule on this loan as well. So go to the next slide. I think that's it. So with that, any questions? We're at, what we're asking for is the appropriation as well as the approval of this inter-fund loan.
Thanks, John. Any questions for John?
Yeah.
Counselor Fillmore?
Uh, John, thanks for that presentation. I think this is good and necessary. Do you know what the variable rate would be to start with?
Good question. Um, we have, I have seen it go several years ago as a half a percent. And with interest rates rising, it's been as high as about 5.4%. And then it varies each month. Right now, I think we're about five, exactly 5%. And so we just watch it and as the Fed adjusts rates or as the market rates go, it, it's starting to go back down because interest rates are going down. And so it just varies. But our interest and real hope and what we wanted to do is make sure that we protected energy or the fund that's extending the loan to make sure that they're not being hurt financially by making it.
Okay, thank you. And I guess just make the obvious pragmatic point. If we don't make the loan, then what happens?
If we don't make the loan?
Yeah.
Well-
The project doesn't get finished, right? Therefore, we don't start generating revenue.
Well, what, if we didn't make the loan, we, we would make the project. Works, we're going to start the project. If the council approves it, we're going to proceed and finish this infrastructure related to the regional sports park. But then you can have a situation where we haven't paid the loan back to energy and then energy short, short those funds. It would basically hurt energy and we would not be in compliance with the state. Uh, because they, we are supposed to and we always make our full effort to repay back those loans. I would also mention that where this, the funding source, the transportation tax, uh, is pretty reliable. I, I really don't think there's any reason why we wouldn't be able to make it. But, uh, but our intent is to pay it back.
Okay.
I have a question for you, John.
Yes.
Um, why do, why do we make the decision to borrow it from energy as opposed to using our own general fund?
They have more fun, they have more resources, more funds. And, uh, it would, could be done through the general fund, but, uh, the general fund doesn't have the same size, amount of reserves. And so the other thing is this way that we're, we tie those funds up for 10 years from the general fund, which will be more concerning, but it's a good question.
Any other questions? Okay. Um, we need to, we will now open this item up for public comment.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Right, seeing no public comment, we'll move to council discussion. Any council discussion? Counselor Whipple?
I will be so happy when we get this thing done and we, we no longer have like more items coming in saying, okay, we need this much more for this part of it and we need this much for, for this part of it. I, I think it feels like more ask than it is because we hear it at the work meeting and then we hear it again. But I'm, I'm, I will be really glad when this thing is, is done and operational. And I'm really grateful that we do have the opportunity to use money from the energy fund. That we're able to, to work together in this mutually beneficial way. So thank you so much for, for doing this and and for making sure that this is the most fiscally prudent way to go ahead and finish the funding for this project.
All right, let's, we'll vote on the implied motion. Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore?
Yes.
And Counselor Handley?
Yes.
All right, that is unanimous. Next, an implied motion on a resolution adapting, one, a sewer system management plan, SSMP, two, a system evaluation and capacity assurance plan, SECAP, and three, a Provo water reclamation facility local limits evaluation. And this will be presented by David Torgason, our water reclamation manager.
Uh, good, good evening. Um, I was hoping to ask for the, the two-minute timer so we can, can get done. But that's not appropriate, but, um, just seeking a, a resolution to adopt, uh, these three plans. Um, as we discussed in the work session, uh, these plans are required by the state and, uh, they are, the, the first two plans, the sewer system management plan and the, um, the evaluation capacity plan are updates based off of, uh, the growth that we've seen in the master plan that's been updated. And the local limit, uh, report that was submitted, um, in the work session was a draft. Um, and we have worked with the State Department of Environmental Quality to update that report. Uh, the updates that have been made, um, are essentially, um, language to help justify and help us support, uh, the local limits that, uh, that we are um, implementing to help protect the, the treatment plant in the sewer system. And, uh, and I included, um, all of the, the updates that have been um, made to the report. I didn't plan on going through those unless you wanted me to. Um, and with that, um, I'll, uh, open it up to questions.
Thank you, David. As riveting as it is, we appreciate that considering the time of this meeting. Um, any questions for David?
Yeah, so I did find it riveting. Like I, I read through things. Um, and I had, I was curious about some of the things like the system cleaning goal where you want to clean it out one, your whole system once every four years. And you get an annual summary of the cleaning that's done. Could, could I read those?
She wants to see the video.
Uh, you're more than welcome. Uh, you're more than welcome to watch them. They're, they're very boring.
Yeah.
But you're-
That's what I'm here for.
So yes, you are, you are welcome to-
You can just forward those to the council office, please.
Are, are you able to actually get the entire system cleaned out in a four-year period?
Uh, not quite, um, but that's, that's our goal. We, we try. Um, but, uh, we're, we're not quite, uh, able to. Some, some of the lines are, um, large or difficult to, to clean. And, uh, we also focus on some of the areas that we know, uh, cause more issues than others.
Yeah, I was also curious about how complete and accurate our sewer maps are. I know when we've done big road excavation things, we're like, oh, there are pipes where we were not expecting pipes and things like that.
With, so with the, with the sewer, it's, um, fairly accurate. It's easy to see because typically you go from manhole to manhole and the manholes, for the most part, are visible. So you are able to see those. Some of the other pipelines, um, are, we're, we're trying to do a better job, um, as they presented earlier on the, on the GIS and the GPS system. Um, we're trying to do better of mapping those, um, as, as they're uncovered and discovered.
The, the last, well, I've got two more things, sorry. Next, the last thing is I was really surprised to see that only 30% of our, our sewer lines have been constructed in the last 30 years. So 70% of our system is more than 30 years old.
That's correct.
What is the expected lifespan for those pipes? Like what are we looking at in necessary replacements in the near future?
So that, that is a very good question. Um, uh, life expectancy of pipe, uh, depending on the type of material, uh, is between 50 and 100 years old. You know, and some of it lasts longer than that, some of it, uh, fails sooner than that. Uh, but that's kind of the life expectancy. Um, and there are rehabilitation methods that we utilize to, um, try to minimize the cost and impact, so we don't have to dig up roads. We can, can do some of those repairs. Uh, what's called trenchless, where we are able to do it through the manholes and not dig up the road. We can't always do that and it's not a permanent long-term solution, but it, it, um, helps extend the life, uh, usually by 20-plus years.
Do we think we've replaced all of the wooden pipes by now?
I, yes, I have not seen any, uh, wooden pipes in the, in the city.
And, um, my last thing is I think we always need to have more public service announcements about not flushing flushable wipes.
I would agree with that.
All right, can you, can you give us a brief statement on why that's the case?
Yes, so flushable wipes, it's not a matter of, if you're going to get a backup, it's a matter of when. Um, probably, uh, you know, we, we get called to go help, um, residents with backups, uh, multiple times every week. And probably 90 to 95% of those are, are flushable wipes. Um, they, they don't break down like toilet paper, although they say they do. Um, they don't, they don't break down. They get caught on branches, cracks, anything that's in the line and they cause a dam and build up and before long you have, uh, sewage in your home. So, um, I'm not discouraging the use of them, but if you use them, just put them in the, in the garbage and empty the garbage regularly.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Any other questions for David? All right, let's open this item up for public comment. Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll move to council discussion. All right, let's move to vote. Um, calling for a vote on the implied motion. Counselor Hoben is excused. Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
And Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
And that is a unanimous vote. Next, an implied motion ordinance submitting privacy code to correct and update Title 10, Chapter 10.04, pre-treatment program. And this is also presented by David Torgason.
I, I, yes. So this one, I really do hope to, to get the two-minute timer, um, done by. Uh, the, these updates to the, to the ordinance, um, are required. Uh, it was uh, required by, uh, the State Division, uh, Environmental Quality to, um, update our ordinance. Um, there was two sections in the ordinance that needed to be updated. Um, one referenced a, um, a laboratory, the laboratory changed names and so the, the state requested that we, uh, update the reference to the laboratory in the, in the ordinance so that it would be, um, clear in that regard. And then the other, um, update to the ordinance is to allow a provision for, um, bypass, uh, in case of an emergency. It would allow, um, industrial users to bypass, uh, their pre-treatment system as they made those repairs.
Thanks, David. Any questions for David? All right, we'll open this item up for public comment. Anyone? All right, seeing no public comment, we'll open it for council discussion. Should we vote? We will vote on the implied motion. Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple is excused. Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
And Counselor Hoben is excused. So that is unanimous. Next, an implied motion and ordinance admitting the general plan to adopt the Provo hillside and canyons plan. And this is a citywide application presented by Hannah Salzle, the Sustainability Coordinator and Planner.
Before I get started, I would just like to note that we have some of our consultants in town today. With us is Becky Zimmerman, the CEO of Design Workshop and the principal on this project. We also have online Alison Borquinn and the rest of the Design Workshop team.
Great.
Good evening. Um, it's wonderful to be here, um, in front of you, council and mayor. Um, first, I'd like to thank the planning staff, um, for their involvement through this entire process and particularly, um, pointing to Hannah Salzle for her leadership through this process from, um, beginning to here. Um, secondly, I'd like to thank the members of our technical working groups. There was a working group for each of the plans. Um, they brought to this process their expertise, their insight and their time. I would like to, um, can't read my own writing. Uh, also, I'd like to thank the community for their response in, in, uh, participating in the surveys and also communicating with their representatives. And I'd like to commend you, the city council and the mayor for, um, such a deep commitment to Provo as a wonderful place to recreate, live, uh, work and go to school for now and in the future. And on behalf of Design Workshop, um, I want to express our gratitude for the opportunity to have been involved in this process. It's really been an honor. And at this point, I will turn it over to Hannah for the presentation.
Thank you. I'd just like to echo. I'd just like to echo those thanks. Um, totaling up the technical working group and the survey, we had approximately 1,050 residents engaged with this process. We also had probably about 20 staffers from different departments. They're all credited on the acknowledgement page, as many names we could get on there. I will just briefly run through not everything we talked about in the meeting today, but just some of the high points. There we go. Um, this process began in August 2021, uh, when the council appropriated funds for these two plans and the gateways that was passed earlier this year in October. So this will wrap up the assignment from that appropriation. Our planning process began with these plans in about August of 2022. Once we'd moved forward with the general plan and we really hit it hard the last year, working with everyone we've known before. It was a wonderfully collaborative process and I think these are some of the best plans we've produced as a team and as a city. Project area, just so everyone understands what we're talking about, is running along the eastern boundary of the city property and then the western boundary comes along the canyon road, Foothills Drive, 1450 East, connecting onto Seven Peaks Boulevard and Slate Canyon Road, down onto State Street. Plan was built around three themes, the natural, social and built environments is carried on in both plans and is the structure for most of the layout. Um, all of it working toward, of course, this goal of, uh, addressing development suitability, trails and recreational assets. And of course, preservation of our environment and the addressing of, uh, natural natural hazards and how to mitigate those. I think that's about all that we need to cover now. There was some discussion in the work meeting about the addition of some conditions with this ordinance. Have those been addressed?
Um, I, yeah, I'm prepared to make a motion that Brian Jones helped me draft, but, um,
Thanks, Hannah.
When, when we get to that, thank you.
Any questions particularly for Hannah? All right, we'll open this up for public comment.
Hi, um, Mayor, Councilors, um, uh, not envious of your, your job, but glad you're doing it and you're doing it very well. I'm Steve Turley and I own, uh, about 30 acres in Provo Canyon that are the subject of this, uh, uh, this plan, um, seven and a half acres at the Indian Road Trailhead, uh, which are also subject part of this plan. And, and 30 acres at Slate Canyon, which are also specified as part of this plan. Um, I, I, I do find it interesting, um, the, the, the discussion in this, um, uh, in this document talks about community engagement. It talks about partnerships. It talks about this land use plan and it nowhere mentions, um, uh, collaborating or, or, or being involved with- and it nowhere mentions collaborating or or being involved with the private landowners, many of which I contacted prior to this, some weeks prior to this, that didn't know about this effort, that hadn't been reached out to, that hadn't heard from our consultants or the city staff. I personally reached out to the city staff and asked to be involved in any sort of task force that was put together or any sort of work group that was put together, just simply to to discuss what our plans are. I can assure you that 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 I have reports, I have engineering, I have I have studies that have been done on my various properties that would have been very helpful and actually contributed to the accuracy rather than perpetuating the inaccuracy that 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 I can I can bring at your request to to your attention, that this report doesn't, isn't complete, and it is not accurate. And so my 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 problem is, is is this a legitimate process? Is this a collaborative process, or is this somewhat adversarial? And my my hope is, is that we can make it collaborative, that we can make it not adversarial. And yet, and yet, our being brought here with this with this plan kind of at the at the 11th hour, doesn't 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 give us that, doesn't give us that opportunity for for what I think is legitimacy. So my my hope is, is that is that the the council will seriously consider, and I and I I don't take lightly what I said earlier about, I do admire your work. I know a lot of work has gone into this. But how can this be legitimate? And I and I say that earnestly, how can this be legitimate without involving a key stakeholder? The key stakeholders are a little part of this. I reached out to a number of you, and I don't want to make an issue of who, but but I didn't I didn't get I didn't get returned calls. I didn't get feedback as to my initiative that I took to 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 be part of this process. And it's very interesting to hear that that in one part of this report, it says that my my property is not developable. And in the other part of the report, it says it should be considered to be a music venue, an outdoor music venue. I thought, well, that's that's interesting. I'd like to talk to somebody about that. So anyway, my my hope is, is that is that landowners can be part of this process and an integral part of this process and not and not just a Band-Aid slapped on at the end. So I do thank you for your work. I don't admire the, or I'm sorry, I don't. I don't underestimate or underappreciate the the difficulty of your decisions. But consider those of us that are that are private landowners that have been involved in this process for years, have plans, have hopes, that want to contribute to the good that Provo has.
Thanks, Steve. All right, any more public comment?
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah. I I think in response to Mr. Turley's comments generally, you know, we we, of course, anticipate that we would get public input on these things. And we had assumed, of course, that there was a fair amount. Perhaps we could ask Hannah to respond to the concerns expressed by Mr. Turley.
We did work with some property owners in the area. Obviously, there are hundreds. I apologize that he wasn't one that was on the list, but it was a demographic that we considered they are a significant stakeholder group.
Thanks, Hannah. Any council discussion? Councilor Ellsworth?
Yeah, I can sympathize, I suppose, because that would be a frustrating situation. But I also understand where the staff is coming from and that it would be impossible to solicit and and capture feedback from every impacted property owner. I did a quick search of this document online, and there's 11 specific references to property owners, private property owners as individuals. There's many important sentences that are calling out the need to work together on shared goals and collaborate. So I think they did their best to capture many and varied interests of property owners as well as other organizations and agencies and interested parties that would be involved.
Any other discussion? All right.
I would, well, I'm I'm just still kind of mulling over this thing. I thought there were many references to property owners, working together on shared goals. I'm looking at a reference on the implementation page. Anyway, there's several. I mean, I know they were in both, so I don't, that's why I'm not clear on how much both reports, both plans on the lake and river were addressing that. And I apologize, Mr. Turley, I don't, I know you've reached out to me on a number of things. I don't recall that I didn't respond to you on this particular one, but if I did, I apologize. I, so earlier today in our work session, we discussed the challenge of wanting to include in this plan South Fork Canyon, the properties that the city owns there, which are in county land and outside of city boundaries. And because this is a part of the general plan, our attorney, Brian Jones, had helped us to understand that including South Fork Canyon in exactly the same way as the Foothills is a bit problematic because it potentially steps on the toes of county jurisdiction and legislative or executive jurisdiction over those city properties. But we discussed as a council the need to signal as a as a council, our interest in providing some guidance and some guiding principles and values that might assist the city going forward in the use and stewardship of those properties. And so I would like to make a motion that, and this is a four-bullet point list for anyone who's recording, the suggested changes presented by Hannah be incorporated into the final plan. And I see that we received emails just in the last little bit with some of those, but I haven't had a chance to look them over. Council staff should be directed to come back as soon as possible with proposed language, stating the council's intent and desires with regards to city-owned properties in Provo Canyon that that lie outside of Provo city boundaries. I don't know if, I don't know if the language there needs to include South Fork Canyon specifically. I don't know if South Fork Canyon is included in Provo Canyon. I guess it is, but I think that should be clear enough. Space should be reserved in an appendix to the plan for the inclusion of such language once approved by the council, and that the plan be approved as written except as amended by this motion. So let me just add before I ask for a second on that motion, that in further conversation with Brian, if there are any suggested amendments to the plan, assuming that it presuming it passes, or, you know, if if in the case it passes tonight, any amendments or or tweaks that might be desirable can always be amended by the council next year. So, you know, there'll be an opportunity to look over the changes that have been made more recently, and then if there's any suggestions after that, we can always do that as a requested amendment. And I'm satisfied with that process. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify that particular issue.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we'll do a vote on George's motion. I'm not going to try and repeat that. Oh, discussion, I'm sorry, let's discuss. Councilor Fillmore? Pardon?
I was just going to comment if it's, I don't know, maybe it's small comfort to Mr. Turley or other landowners, but I I think we all acknowledge that these plans are are simply that, they're plans. They're not binding, they're statements of aspiration, they're our intent. They don't have the same force as the ordinance pass saying thou shalt not, right? Okay, so you will have another bite of the apple. Okay.
Any more discussion on the motion? All right, we will vote on George's motion. Councilor Whipple?
Yes.
Councilor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Councilor Fillmore?
Yes.
Councilor Handley?
Yes.
Councilor Shipley?
Yes.
Councilor Hoben is excused, Councilor McKay, yes. Next, an applied motion on ordinance may the general plan to adopt the Provo River and Lake Shore Plan. And this is a citywide application presented by Janson.
Did we, but did we actually approve the plan? I guess that's what my motion did. Okay, all right. I was a little confused about what I just said.
And that was unanimous. I did miss that part. Janson?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. So this is the River and Lake Shore Plan, just so we're all on the the same page. This is the project area going from Provo River down from Provo Canyon out to the lakefront that we have that we share with Utah Lake. Similar to the Hillside and Canyon, this plan is also written around these three themes of a natural environment, a social environment, and a built environment. Again, we we won't go through everything that we went to before, but we'll take a second here. Throughout this plan, through the community outreach, through our technical working group, we kind of hope to accomplish these four goals, which is long-term water quality and management, improved safety and recreational assets, embracing economic opportunities and coordinating partnerships for implementation. And we do think that this plan accomplishes all of that. Well, unless you have specific questions, we can just kind of end there. Any questions?
Thanks, Janson. We love it. Any questions? Councilor Fillmore?
Maybe just a general comment. I really do appreciate the the excellent and extended effort by Community Development Department, by Janson, by Hannah, by everyone involved. Becky, thank you so much. This has been a labor of love for many of you. I think you've struck a good balance between protecting, preserving, and enhancing these natural resources that have been somewhat neglected and still leaving open the possibilities for good economic development. It's responsible and can enhance the overall welfare of the city. So thank you for that effort.
Oh, no, thank you.
Councilor Whipple?
So I see that I've gotten the email with the 100% final version of the plan, but I can't open it.
Oh.
It won't let me download it, so I can't see that I won over CHAZ.
So here's the thing, there, in that 100%, I actually looked for your changes, because they were made. We had all the other changes in the comment log, and I wrote, I wrote your two changes right here. Wrote those down, but apparently they they were missed in the 100%. So even though it's really the 99.9% draft, because I went and looked in the 100% and the two changes weren't there. But we've sat in there, being worked on by the second, so.
All right, so we can't vote on it until those changes are.
Until we're make sure that Box Elder is out of there.
Yeah, Box Elders matter. But I do want to say that I really appreciate the work on these plans and the fact that, you know, the the councilors who who put in comments, there were relatively few changes or clarifications or comments that were made, which indicates that you had done an excellent job in getting something to us. And and I'm I'm nitpicking over the proper categorization of a native plant, so this is fantastic.
I'll make sure you win that document, so.
All right, we need to open this item up for public comment. Any public comment on this item?
Steve Turley, I own some property along Provo River on the furthest west end. I I need to bring your attention while I I think that everything that's suggested in this in this plan is great. There's a, I think there's an oversight, but before I get to there, Councilor Fillmore, I could not agree with you more. I I listened to your comments this afternoon, and and that that lower section of Provo River has been abandoned by by Provo. And I and I and I give an earnest plea, when I when I reached out to some of you and I reached out to the mitigation commission and I've been to those meetings, they they have basically, they've kind of thrown up their hands and they've said, well, it's not ours, it's not ours. It's this hot, stinky potato that nobody seems to want to grab. And and I can tell you what, the funding that we talked, you talked about earlier, the mitigation commission has 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 washed their hands of it. I mean, they've said, hey, you guys had your chance to to be part of this, and we'll put some aeration devices in there, and 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 the county gets to maintain them. But the 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 thing I want to bring to your attention tonight, though, is our ordinances don't work. When you talk to the states' water resources people, they do not consider that a portion of the river anymore. They they now consider that a finger of the lake. And by doing that, what what do our ordinances say when it says the the river frontage? I mean, it doesn't, I I can tell you what, the the state water rights do not recognize that stretch, that lower stretch anymore as part of the Provo River. They 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 classify it as part of the the Utah Lake now. And so it it falls under different classifications. And our ordinances, which I'm subject to as a private property owner, on the river, it's no longer considered river, so what applies there anymore? There there's confusion. And and as part of this plan, it would be really nice if we could have clarity as to that. And then please don't abandon it. I mean, I heard I heard kind of some some shoulders being shrugged today. We can do stuff. We we, I mean, I got to tell you what, we may be little people out there on the west side, but but it's meaningful. It's it's part of our legacy, it's part of Provo City's law.
Thanks, Steve. Any other public comment? All right, we'll move to council discussion. Councilor Handley?
So I I appreciate Mr. Turley sharing that information about the status of that portion. Given what Mr. Henderson said earlier in the meeting today, I'm just wondering what options we have for, other than lobbying different agencies that do have jurisdiction over that stretch, what options do we have? And maybe a related question to Mr. Jones is, you know, with regard to this plan, is there anything that we can consider stating in this plan somewhere with regard to that? I just don't know what the options are, because it feels to me like if that's county land, the portion of the water was decided by other entities, other agencies, and, you know, Melissa Stamp and her folks are overseeing the mitigation efforts. I just don't know what options are even available to us. I don't know if anybody has any help from on this.
The related question is, who's responsible for it?
His county.
Who, no, I mean, from a city perspective, whose stewardship does that fall within? Who should we look to to come up with some ideas and mitigation assistance? And we can't just wash our hands of it and say, well, that's that, because it's it's a stinky mess. Who has the responsibility, the stewardship, from a Provo city perspective? Can anybody here help me answer that question? Because I'm hearing for the first time, there's no such thing as the Provo River. Once it goes past the diversion dam, and we're now looking at a finger of Utah Lake, which adds a certain level of complexity to anything we might want to do. So.
That's the first time I've heard that, too. I just know that the county owns the River Trail from that point forward that connects down and turns, and the county doesn't touch our trail, and we don't touch their trail, basically. It's their property and.
And they own the river bed? Or?
I have no idea on that one. Scott, do you remember?
I mean, when it's when it's not private property, I assume.
It's definitely a complicated question.
There's a lot of owners in the Delta project.
Crossover of owners that go into the bed area and all that could be. Crossover of owners that go into the bed area and all that could be. You know, we look at the, a lot of time with responsibility, even in Provo Parks and Recreation, which has a trail that goes along and parks that go along that same side. Some of that maintenance will be handled and it also serves as a stormwater delivery point, too. So, I mean, there, there are a lot of management elements that are associated with it. This one section is complicated and it is a great question. And I guess we would have to explore, you know, how we go into other jurisdictions and figure out the solution that we're talking about here.
Well, I, I really acknowledge it's a complex problem. And, but I think we're all a little shocked to hear some of these things tonight. We need to invite the mayor to put a committee together or something to study this, come back with some options. Make sure Hannah Sals is part of it. I mean, that's, we, we just can't turn our back on it. Got to do something, right? I mean, it's part of Provo's history and legacy of the governing bodies here, so. Can, you have any thoughts for us, Scott or the mayor?
The, the part where it's a piece of Utah Lake, I could definitely check on that. I'm the vice chair for the Utah Lake Authority and I'm happy to look into that piece because I've never heard that. And I've been the chair and when it was the Utah Lake Commission and we have never, on every map I've looked at and they've shown us in our board meetings, it's never brought, gone up into the riverbed. So that's interesting. I'll ask at our meeting.
Well, but we need to designate somebody to study it. Can, can we invite the administration to come back in our next meeting and say, this is what we're doing to get to the bottom of this?
Well, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
But you did.
I did.
Go ahead.
Yeah, but I didn't mean to. I just was going to say, I think, I mean, I, I think part of this is, you know, and it may be, at least in my conversations with the River Delta Restoration folks, that this is, some of this was unnecessary, was delayed. Some of the mitigation efforts were delayed and so the quality of, of the river is worse than, or the, the now finger is worse than it, than it would have been or should be. I mean, I think, I think part of the problem is we're in the middle of a process of restoration that takes some time. And so we may, we may just need to remain in close contact with those people because I think they're the ones, at least right now, who are charged with the mitigation and monitor that closely. And, and then, you know, as we move forward, discover ways, ways in which we can play a role in, in moving things forward there. And if, I think at some point we just decide that there's some component of our plan that we want to add in, I think we can do that. But until we have, we have just lots of answer, questions that we don't have answers to at this point. But I think part of the problem is that it's still in process.
If you'll excuse me for interrupting you.
Yeah.
After you interrupted me. What, what I want to get at is this, I, I, I don't think there is a mitigation effort going on at all.
There is, there is.
On that, on that piece of water?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, besides this, this aeration. You know, what you said earlier was, well, they're going to do some aeration. I think that's.
I can share with you what I know, but I'm just, I'm just telling you, that's what I've been, that's what I've been told.
I, I would just like to see some, some individuals, some group here in the city administration take responsibility for studying the problem and coming back to the council and saying, this is what we learned, this is what we can do, this is what we can't do, this is who we can appeal to. Here are some options. As opposed to just say, golly, fellas.
It can be talked about in leadership. Like, I don't know if this is the.
There's a whole bunch of stuff that are in the process.
Okay. Let's make sure George is on the committee, too.
Any more discussion?
Yeah.
Councillor Whipple.
I'll jump in on it. It was, was always known that when we did the Delta Diversion Project, that it would have a significant impact on that portion of the Provo River, which was never the original Provo Riverbed. It was, you know, a cannibalized version of the river that destroyed the natural delta and lakeshore area in order to reclaim farmland from, from the lake. It's a human constructed environment that has supported wonderful wildlife and recreational opportunities. But like every Lacustrine and river environment, it changes. Waters change everything all the time. And the mitigation efforts have been, you know, we're, we're not satisfied with them yet, but they were an attempt to help preserve what people had come to love about this man-built environment. But I think that the trade-off, where we get this amazing delta through the diversion, is a much greater benefit than the loss that we get to the little man-made environment. And as that Provo River Delta area opens up with all of its trails and everything, you know, we will have a much better amenity through the area. That doesn't mean that we're completely absolved of responsibility with this area. But our responsibility is limited by the fact that we have no ownership, we have no agency, we have no power to do anything there, like except get information and present it and ask the people who do have decision-making authority to act. So we can do that, but we can't put more water in it. And, yeah, but we, we can appreciate the good things that we've gotten. That these, this is how trade-offs, trade-offs work. And this is one way that we were trying to, as a much larger community with many agencies, make better changes than what we had done in the past.
Hannah, could you tell us a couple of things you texted me, please?
Of course. I was sent up as the staff representative from the planning team to answer the earlier question about who owns the riverbed and lakebed. Everything that was underwater when the state was founded was declared to be state sovereign land, is the phrase used. So it is all owned by the state, I mean, riverbeds, lakebeds, or anything that at the time of founding was a riverbed or lakebed, but may no longer be so. The other point is that there was a recently formed Utah Lake Watershed Council, just formed over the summer, and its membership includes members of our Public Works Water Resources Team. They would likely be the place to start. The commission also includes members of Central Utah Water Conservancy District, Utah Lake Authority, anyone else who asked anything to do with any watersheds in our system.
Thank you, Hannah. So, yeah, I think there's a lot more to be discussed on this, so we can take care of that on our tracker and leadership and different avenues in the new year.
And I do want to acknowledge to Mr. Turley that I did not respond to this particular issue with you. I didn't follow up on that phone call that I was supposed to make to you. So I will, let's talk this week and, and I'd love to hear more.
All right. Are we ready to vote on the implied motion?
Yes.
All right. Councillor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Councillor Fillmore.
Yes.
Councillor Handley.
Yes.
Councillor Shipley.
Yes.
Councillor Hoban's excused, councillor McKay, yes, councillor Whipple.
Yes.
And that is unanimous. Next implied motion on an ordinance amending the zone map of approximately 0.46 acres generally located at 963 West, 500 North, from R 1.6 to LDR, and authorizing a related development agreement. This is in the Dixon neighborhood and it'll be presented by Erin Ardmore.
Okay, thank you, council. So we went over this today in, in study meeting, a little bit of history about the different plans that have come across this property and, and the, the remaining concerns, mostly related to parking, but also to potential density here. So let me just give a kind of overview of that. So the property as it is has a single-family home on it and a large backyard. The, the applicant has requested the low-density residential zone and is now coming forward with a concept to put two additional homes in the, in that space. The progress that he's, he's given to, to help this be more digestible to, to the staff and planning commission is offered owner occupancy through ADUs in, in those back units, unit two and three, that helps provide attainable housing. There's, so there's lots of strategies that we've talked about as staff and as council to try to provide more attainable housing, affordable housing throughout the city. This isn't the end-all solution, but this is one way to do it. To provide kind of these infill sites with, with homes that kind of fit the characteristics of the neighborhood, still provide open space for the residents that, that would live there. So that's, that's what's on the table for, for the council to decide upon tonight. I believe there's questions on the, the square footages earlier in study meeting. You can see there on, on this map that they're both over 1,000 square feet. So livable units that, that really do, do meet the, the characteristics of this Dixon neighborhood. The, the request for LDR with a development agreement is one way to do this. It was mentioned today by councillor Hoban, the VLDR, with or without a development agreement would be another way to do it. I think if the applicant is, is amenable to either situation, staff would, would feel the same about either zone being approved here. I think it ends in the same product, but if there's more comfort in one zone than the other, staff would be comfortable with either one of those. But that's all I have on this, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for Erin?
Yes.
Councillor Shipley.
So a quick question from the comment you just made. So if we have a developer, a development agreement with the current zone, that protects us, but only insofar as the developer stays the owner on the property, right?
No, so the development agreement gets recorded on the property, so it, it runs with the land. Technically, once it's developed, a lot of that's assumed to, to be satisfied. But that would be found in a title report for future owners.
Okay.
Councillor Hoban.
I guess just to follow up, so it would be enforceable after the first owner or no?
Right. Yes, it would be. It would, because it is recorded on the title and it gives, it gives, essentially it gives code enforcement kind of more teeth to, to enforce any issues that come upon in the future.
Code enforcement, but what about development services? So let's say.
Yeah, that, so they're, they're.
Somebody came in and said, we're going to bulldoze these three homes and build a small apartment complex as we can do it under the LDR zone. Would they be able to or no? Sorry, I'm just trying to fully understand.
So that, that future developer or owner would have to come back to the council at the time and request to amend the development agreement on the, on the property.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Erin?
I know the, the owners here, if you have questions.
Okay, thank you. We will open up this item for public comment. All right, we'll now discuss. Any discussion on this one? Councillor Ellsworth.
Yeah, I, I have heard some of the concerns that people have raised. It sounds like the concerns that councillor Hoban raised are largely resolved, right? You can come in and scrape the site in three years after you build these new homes and put in more density. And then there might be a, a neighbor that was concerned about privacy. I think the concern about privacy is just relevant on any lot, anywhere you go because any nine-year-old could be peeking over your fence at any point. That happens in my neighborhood. And then the planning commission, it seems like their primary concern was parking, but the staff feels like that that's pinned down and that that's adequate. And so I feel like this would be a net positive. You know, we've, I think we've generally wanted smart infill, we've generally wanted affordable housing, we've generally wanted owner occupancy, and this facilitates those things. I, I don't see us necessarily voting for those things very often. And this is just two additional homes and two accessory dwelling units. I guess a third accessory dwelling unit, but it seems like a very small incremental step towards some of the many big goals that we have to create attainable housing in our community.
I think some infill is great and I think two homes without ADUs would be great, two extra homes without ADUs would be great, so three homes or two homes with ADUs. But I'm, I'm perplexed why this didn't go back to the neighborhood meeting after, like after it was changed, shouldn't have gone back to the neighborhood meeting for more feedback? Because it did not have support at all originally with the three extra homes making it four homes that did not have ADUs, correct?
So, yeah, so the initial proposal was three homes in the back and I, I believe those also were proposed to have ADUs in them. So the, the, the neighborhood meeting requirement on a legislative item was met on that initial discussion. The applicant is, is free to, to schedule with the, the neighborhood, neighborhood chair coordinator if, if they want to go back and get different feedback and, and try to satisfy concerns. It's not required of them. And this, in this case, they didn't choose to do that.
I just have a hard time believing that the long-term residences in this neighborhood are okay with this. You know, we heard from multiple of them, but I just think this is too dense for the area that we want to preserve as a single-family neighborhood, that I want to preserve as a single-family neighborhood. Councillor Whipple.
I'm really excited about this project because I see it as meeting our general plan goals, where we look at doing kind of infill, reducing lot sizes, things like that, so that we can gradually welcome more people into our neighborhoods without, you know, tearing down a block and replacing it with high-rise apartments. Because unless throughout the city we do little projects like this, the, the big dramatic changes that fundamentally change the character of a neighborhood are the only way that we're going to be able to accommodate the people who need to live here. I see this as kind of like a little mini pocket neighborhood where we've got, you know, three little houses together. They're detached, single-family homes, so we still have the single-family character of the neighborhood. And it's important to remember that an accessory dwelling unit is a permitted use. It's not that we're building a twin home. So whoever purchases this home can choose to live in it and occupy the entire space, just like any other home that has an accessory dwelling unit. So you've got that flexibility for families as they go through different phases, different financial needs, different space needs. A family can stay in one of these homes through many different phases of their existence. And if they want to use that permitted use, it has to be owner occupied. So that makes it more likely that it will be purchased by somebody who will actually be able to live in it as opposed to an investor who would only be able to rent it out as one thing, instead of being able to rent it out as though it's a duplex. So I, I think this is great. I think it's much better than the plan to have three little houses back there because it would have been four houses on a, what, 0.4 acre lot? And so all of the open space was going to be dedicated to meeting the parking requirements. And this way they meet the parking requirements and they're able to have grass space and, you know, these little common areas where you could play and everything. And you've got the setbacks from the other properties, so you are not infringing on neighboring property owners' rights. And I guess the last thing I want to say is, I don't think it's right to prioritize the desires of existing neighboring. the desires of existing neighboring property owners over anyone else who could be living in Provo. Right? Their property right is for their property, not to dictate what happens on the property next to them, especially when the anticipated use of the property next to them is still single-family homes. It's not like we're putting a meat rendering factory next to them that really would destroy their property values. So I, I think this is great and I would love to see more projects like this come through our city. And part of the reason this is so great is it's an individual owner, an individual parcel. So this is the kind of gradual change and welcoming of a few more people into our city that we need to preserve our city's character.
Councillor Shipley.
Sorry, can I go back to asking a question real quick? Is that permissible?
Of course you can.
Thank you. So help us understand how this is gonna, how, how we're going to make sure it's owner occupied, other than we're saying that, you know, ADUs are allowable and so theoretically, somebody would want to live in the house and have an ADU as well. But what, what in the development agreement dictates that they're going to be owner occupied?
So to establish the ADU, they go through a permitting process, right? So on that permitting process, we, we verify that the owner is living at the property. We verify that.
But a future owner doesn't have to do that.
Right, and that's a risk on any property that allows ADUs, right?
So, so really when we talk about these are probably going to be owner occupied, I mean, we're, it's just like any other property in the city. They could be bought by an investor and an investor could treat them as one rental property as opposed to, you know, living in it. So I guess what I'm saying is it's a little disingenuous to say that these are going to be owner occupied. We don't know that. It's like any other property in the city, they could be rented out if they, if the owner decides to do that. Is that correct?
Sure, yeah, I mean, anybody can break the law, yeah.
Well, they wouldn't be breaking the law if they didn't do the ADU.
Correct. I, I see what you're saying. I'm sorry.
So, so all three of these could be rentals. I mean, theoretically, the owner of the property who doesn't plan on staying there could move. They could sell them to one, you know, investor from out of state and all three could be just single-family rentals.
Sure.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. I actually am in favor of infill like this. Having said that, I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, the comments and conversation we had in the work meeting weren't interpreted as we're, we're gonna, somehow the city can mandate that these are always going to be owner occupied. They're, they're, nothing the city can do will mandate that they're owner occupied.
Right, I think the advantage to, to have, having them put that in there is, is trying to meet the owner occupancy goals of the city, right? Especially in these, these pioneer neighborhoods where we have really very high rental rates. And on top of that, if that is, is put into their, their mortgage, right? They can show that as possible income. It, it helps make it more attainable. So I mean, there's, there's advantages to it, but of course they can always use as a regular single-family home, yes.
And then help me understand, is there any disadvantage to us tonight doing a substitute motion to make this V LDR? Just to take off the table the chance that there's legal, that 20 years down the road that, that we get burned by the fact that it was LDR for some reason?
Not that, not that I could see. It's, and it would be a lesser zone. It wouldn't have to go back to planning commission because you're, you're changing it to a lesser, a less intense zone. So like I said, staff is uncomfortable with either zone if, if the applicant is agreeable to it.
So, yeah, I guess I would ask the applicant, is there any reason that they'd be uncomfortable with the LDR? Shouldn't have to do any of it, right? Would there be any process?
So we can just do it? If that's the case, and I, I mean, if we can fit the same plan, I have no reservations whatsoever. Yeah, that's great.
And maybe this is just from, and I was telling Travis, this is after we had the questions earlier, like maybe this is just a, a question that comes up over and over again about development agreements and our ability as a city to, to enforce on development agreements with not the original owner, especially after the project's done. So I guess my, my comfort level would be better if, if we would just zone it to the, the zone that's appropriate for what we're actually, the project that's going on and not worry about the development agreement coming into play with enforcement down the road.
I was thinking technically the only way owner occupancy could be more guaranteed is if the HOA had CCNRs, right? That it had to be owner occupied, but it takes one person to buy them all and change the CCNRs. It doesn't really matter. Councillor Fillmore.
I, I will say that I understand and appreciate the virtues of infill. But I do, I worry about this from a parking perspective and the potential burn that places on the neighborhood. But I also have to, I've got to take issue with the notion that's been articulated that, or at least implied that somehow our city has a duty to provide housing for everyone who wants to live here. We don't. There are limits on how many people we can accommodate. And it's not our duty to find ways to find a, a bed for everybody who wants to come to Provo. Our duty is to maintain the quality of our city for those people who've already invested in homes, who moved here into a neighborhood that they liked, maybe a neighborhood they wanted to grow old in. And we keep making these changes and the ADUs are a symptom of that. There are some on the council think ADUs are the panacea for problems. I disagree. I, I wouldn't be opposed to lowering the age for senior citizens who want some to, to do ADUs in their basement. But this idea of proliferating ADUs against the wishes of most neighborhoods, established neighborhoods, is nonsensical to me. An unnecessary forced error, to use a tennis term. It's going to aggravate neighborhoods who don't want ADUs proliferating in their neighborhoods. But we're from our, we're saying from our superior perspective, we know what's best for you. But these neighborhoods almost uniformly don't want ADUs. Why do we keep trying to shoehorn them in? I mean, we can do infill here without an ADU component. Why is that so critical? I'm just expressing some long-term frustration over the ADU debate. I don't know that we need to go any further.
Yes, just to clarify, for this, this particular area is already legally allowed ADU. So it's not changing the zone for this particular neighborhood, to be clear on that. But I share your sentiment. George.
I just want to express my support for it. I think it's an outstanding project. And I think if we as a council take seriously our goal to have increased homeownership in the city, we have to do more for lower-income people who have the means to buy at a lower price point. We don't have to supply housing for every single income level, but we've identified through extensive studies that that's the area that is the most vulnerable in our city. The missing middle, and this is exactly that kind of housing. It's a very modest infill project. And if we're not going to approve this, and we're going to make it difficult for developers to come forward with other kinds of infill projects, I think we're making a big mistake. So I'm going to stick up for the young couples, and I've said this numerous times, but I keep investigating more about other cities. Young couples are leaving places like Provo and moving to Pleasant Grove because they can buy a home with an ADU basement and they can afford it. So if we're not going to, if we're not going to provide that kind of housing for those young couples, we're not going to get the homeownership we want. We're not going to have the families moving in that we want. If we're only providing homes that are over $700,000 for families that can afford that, we can do that and we will do that and we are doing it. But we're not meeting this income level's needs nearly enough in this city. And this is exactly the kind of project that I want to see more of, so I'm fully supportive.
If I might just respond, Mr. Handley, I agree wholeheartedly that we need to increase homeownership. And I'm fully in favor of multiplying homeownership possibilities for startup and move-up homes. My problem is the games that get played with the ADU setup. You're making an assumption that young couples are going to come.
Well, isn't it also an assumption to assume that, you know, what, 18 students, single people are going to move in there?
Sure it is.
It's going to happen anywhere. There's no, we should assume that's going to happen anywhere.
What, what I'm saying is, or what I'm asking is, is there a way to solve that problem? You want young couples, I want young couples, we want infill. How can, what legal mechanism is available to us to, to tip the scales in favor of young couples, homeowners as opposed to 18 renters?
My support this, for this, I didn't want to have an extended debate. I think the way you do that is you give them a home at the price they can afford and they'll find it. They're looking for it and if they see a house at that price, they're going to jump at it. So if they see a house at $400,000 that has an ADU, they'll, they'll make an offer. If, if it's not at the price point, they won't make an offer. They'll go, they'll be looking in Pleasant Grove and they'll be looking in Spanish Fork.
Could we have the builder come ask, we'd love to know the pricing. What are the pricing going to be of these homes?
My expectation is that they'd hopefully be in the mid-fours. So once you take the ADU into account, I mean, that makes it so that your working class can afford a home like this. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is, I mean, we keep bringing up how dense this is. I mean, the underlying zone in this whole area is 6,000, it's R1.6. So if you take the 20,000 square foot lot and divide it by three homes, these, if, if they were on their own, quote, individual lots, I mean, the allocated density is actually meeting and exceeding the underlying zone. So my neighbor to the left, my neighbor to the right, both have smaller lots if, than if you were to divide the 20,000 by three. So it's, we had to go that D LDR route because of the frontage situation. So you can't just do an R1.6, but it does have the same density as the zone that's in, it's in right now.
Can you please put the slide back to the square footage?
And then this is important, on the square footage, that's just the, the ground floor square footage. So these homes are not just like tiny little 1,000 square foot homes that have an ADU in them. That's just the ground, the square footage of the main level. So like on that 1334, there's a two-car garage in that. So it's actually like 934, but then there's basement of 934 and then second floor space as well.
What he's saying is both of those little houses are bigger than the house I live in.
I want to call for a vote.
Yeah, sorry. And can I just, can I officially move that we, a substitute motion to, to state that it's a V LDR zone that we're going to as opposed to an LDR? I'll accept everything else about the mo, I'm, I'm supportive of this, but for whatever reason, just, I'd, I'd like to just have it be the zone that it should have been to, to accept the properties that we're doing.
Okay, do we have a second on Shipley's motion?
All second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, so I want to make sure I understand. It'll be exactly what's written here, except it's a V LDR. Okay, yeah, that's fantastic.
Councillor Hoban.
I'm sensitive to the need to add more housing and I like infill. I guess from my perspective, this just seems too much. I think we're, we have an, we don't have an obligation, but we really should be trying to add housing quickly. But I don't think we have an obligation to cause problems for ourselves in regards to potential enforcement or parking issues. So I would, I could get behind something like three homes without ADUs, a total of three homes without ADUs, or something like two homes with ADUs. But this just seems too much from my perspective.
Any other discussion? All right, so Councillor Whipple.
I, I just want to add that there was a few years ago, a Habitat project on Third South where they added a couple of little houses onto a lot kind of like this. And it's fantastic. We have people living there, the lawns well taken care of. We haven't had parking issues and it gave people an opportunity for homeownership that they wouldn't have had otherwise. And that was the same kind of thing where you had an existing house and you added a couple more around it. This worked just down the street from where I live. And it's a very similar neighborhood to this part of Provo. So I think this is entirely appropriate. I've seen it work for my neighbors and I'm really happy that we have an opportunity for these neighbors to experience this as well.
All right, we ready to vote? Okay, Councillor Fillmore. Councillor Handley.
Yes.
Councillor Shipley.
Yes.
Councillor Hoban.
No.
Councillor McKay, no. Councillor Whipple?
Yes.
Councillor Ellsworth?
Yes.
All right, so that passes for three.
Can I ask for clarification? I thought we were voting on the motion that Mr.
We were.
Okay, so we're still going to vote on this?
It's a substitute motion.
It's a substitute motion.
Okay, so that, I'm, I'm having the same confusion I had before, so we just passed this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we are going to help Schofield and Headman get out of here, so we're going to jump to theirs really quick. An implied motion on an ordinance submitting Provo City Code regarding fire plan review fee updates presented by Lynn Schofield.
Thank you. You can put on that two-minute timer. I apologize, my tie is somewhere between here and Las Vegas, but I don't know where. So I'm going to just keep this really simple. We spoke a couple of weeks ago in the work meeting. Our third-party planner reviewers have increased their rates. We have, we have presented to the council a proposed ordinance amendment to correspond, for a corresponding rate increase. Again, our, our ultimate goal is to kind of be a revenue neutral so that we cover our costs, but we don't go in the red. And so that is, that is what we're here to ask you tonight is to, and we would have postponed this, but their fee increase occurred before you will meet again. So that is what we're here for.
Okay, thanks Lynn. We'd like to open, any questions for Lynn first? All right, we'd like to open this item up for public comment. Okay, seeing no public comment, we will move to council discussion. Any discussion? All right, let's vote for the implied motion. Councillor Handley.
Yes.
Councillor Shipley.
Yes.
Councillor Hoban.
Yes.
Councillor McKay, yes. Councillor Whipple?
Yes.
Councillor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Councillor Fillmore? And that's unanimous. Thanks Lynn.
Thank you.
Sorry you had to wait so long. All right, next implied motion, an ordinance demanding Provo City Code, Chapter 14.30, to update and clarify regulations for ADUs. This will be presented by Malia Daly, a policy analyst for the council.
Sorry. All right, um, this is regarding ADUs. So sorry. Hopefully the shortest ADU discussion we will ever have. So here we go. Okay, so this, if you remember back in, well, last year we made the big amendments to Chapter 1430. So we did increase the owner occup, increase the occupancy limits. And then we also did the permit pathway to have people get special permitted use to allow ADUs on their properties or apply as a group of properties. And then we also, what else were we, oh, and then we also permitted on the west side. Thank you. So those were the three things we did then. At the time that we passed those, we also came back and said that within a year, we wanted to come back and re, revisit the code and see if there's any updates we wanted to do. So we did that in October. The council didn't make any motions for major amendments, but did make a motion to update and clarify regulations in the code so that they're clear for applicants, clear for staff to interpret. And also kind of clean up some zones that when this was originally drafted in 2021, there were some zones include in order to get us to the minimum 30, the minimum 33% threshold that the state set for ADU allowance. We're well past that. We're now at 44%. And so we're just kind of cleaning up some zones where we permitted it, but in all practicality, there's no way an ADU could exist in that zone because we allowed it in some pro zones that are just condos, like one-bedroom condos or just in mobile homes. So you couldn't have an ADU anyway. So we're just kind of cleaning up the code so that way it's simpler. It's easier to read. It's easier for staff and for applicants. So Michael, I don't know if you have those amendments pulled up and we can go through those. This is perfect. Okay, so the first one here, so we've made just a definition of ADUs in this first section. This is just throughout the code. This is just throughout the code, um, when we're reviewing this with Development Services, with planners, we realized that there was a clause in the code, and we'll see it later stricken through, that it says that anywhere where an internal ADU allowed, a detached is as well. But then throughout the rest of the code, we like have detached, internal, detached, internal, like throughout. And so it made it confusing for staff to read through that, but also applicants. So we just put a definition at the beginning and then cut anywhere where we specified internal or detached because it was already allowed for both in all those zones. So it just is clarification there. Um, we also moved up the areas zone primarily for residential use. So this sets, yeah, this sets the base for the zones that allow ADUs that are primarily residential. And then from there, we can exempt zones from that list. So to say there, where ADUs are prohibited. So we just moved this up again for clarification and to kind of clean up section, the O2, where it gets a little messy. And this is a point, I don't know if you read the Report of Action of Planning Commission, Michael covered for me last week and did a great job. Um, Planning Commission's notes, they noted that it is written so that way we're listing places where we first list and say, ADUs are allowed in areas primarily zone residential use. And then we have a section, we say, except in these areas, it's prohibited. And Planning Commission thought that was confusing, so they suggested and put it in the Report of Action to rewrite the chapter. So it's written as a list of where it's included rather than a list of where it's excluded. And staff can do that. We just would have to rewrite the chapter, which we can do. It'll be the exact same thing, it'll just be written separately. So that's something we can visit in a second. But then, going back down here to section O2, so this is where we cleaned up those codes. So if you remember in the work meeting, Michael, you scroll down, right there, perfect. Um, we discussed, um, like I mentioned, those zones where practically you can't have an ADU. So those pro zones that we struck out, um, we included those so that way we could make the 33% minimum, but in actuality, those practically could not have a, um, ADU. And then if you see here, Laffey Fields and then the Villages Celebration, both of those are west-side developments. And we included later on in our amendment that everything west-side is allowed ADU. So this is just kind of conflicting, so we took this out. And then, in the new B here, we just cleaned this up so that way, because we had the, it's allowed in R1.6 or R1.8 except the map. So we just combined those. So that way, again, just simpler and cleaning it up.
Wait a sec, what, on the west side, wasn't those Villages Celebration, wasn't there HOA, no A D Us or something? Or their script was too small?
Yeah, so that's in their HOA, that's up to them, but as far as our code, it's allowed. Um, yeah, that's their own thing. Um, and then I think the rest of the amendments throughout the section, again, the detached thing, we just took that out because it just made sense to then put that in the definition at the beginning instead of having this like subclause that says detached are allowed where internals are and then having it confusing. So that's why we added that definition. And the rest of the amendments in the section, again, are just taking out the word internal or detached where it specifies it, but it really shouldn't because they're allowed in both places. We didn't do anything with the, um, the special use permit pathways. As directed by the council, we didn't, um, touch that. And I think that is it. So now, if you guys have any questions, happy to answer.
Counselor Hoben.
So I remember something specifically we discussed when we passed the ADUs on the west side was excluding some of the developments that already have very, um, higher density. So for example, I think several of the Ivory developments, like Broadview Shores and such, so does this change that?
No, so this doesn't change it. So those are included there in the, um, development things. But when we talked about that last year, we went in and looked at the HOA agreements and.
I'm not talking about HOA agreements. I'm talking about the fact that these lots are already 4,000 square feet. And so to add an ADU, and they're already cramped with parking, we had specifically excluded those for a purpose, so intentionally. Does this change that? I'm not talking about HOAs.
We did not exclude those, and so this doesn't change anything.
They are excluded currently.
They're excluded not through our code, if they are excluded.
Okay, is Bill here? Because Bill was the one that, that reassured me that they were excluded. So let's get Bill in here to clarify that.
Yeah, Counselor Hoben, I, I guess I remember the conversation differently. I remember us talking about that issue. I remember there being a lot of assurances, my recollections, I remember there being a lot of assurances that even if they were allowed, it was just infeasible for them to be built. But the way the code is written right now does not prohibit them because even, even though it has these sections in here right now that say it's prohibited in these areas, the only thing that's in the code about the west side says, notwithstanding everything above, it's allowed everywhere west of I-15. So that trumps everything else in the code as it's currently written.
So I guess, Bill, I'd just like some clarity. As I recall, when we visited this, I don't know, a year ago or whatever it was, we had specifically discussed not include, that you wouldn't be able to build an ADU in like Broadview Shores where there's like 4,000 square foot lots. And, you know, the Ivory developments, my understanding was that they were, you couldn't build an ADU in those developments. Is that correct or not correct?
The biggest problem with Bill, it's generally correct, mostly correct. It's not always correct, but it's mostly correct. And that a lot that size is going to be very hard to provide required parking. The situation of Broadview Shores, where they went through their last amendment process with y'all, they took away from themselves the ability to put ADUs in there. Now, this legislation that would open up the west side would open that back up to them unless they have their own documents, their own CCNRs and those things that close that down.
See, and that's a concern for me because we had specifically addressed, addressed that. That we didn't want to open this up, that we, at least from my perspective, we approved ADUs on the west side, knowing that there was something ensuring that they couldn't be built in those areas. Because that's trouble waiting to happen in my mind, on scale.
Yeah, but Bill, let me clarify, because what I heard you just say right now is that the reason why it's current, why it's not going to happen is because it's infeasible to build the parking, not because there's something in the code that prohibits it. Um, in most cases, it's infeasible to build the parking. With their last zoning, Aaron, with their last zoning, did the zoning itself prohibit the ADUs? Is that in their zone? Do you remember? They had their own zone, it's an SDP5 zone that they amended. The last time they amended it, did they take away?
The last amendment included taking away the ability for second kitchens. Um, so it was silent on ADUs and what, I think what, uh, Brian is saying is that notwithstanding everything west of I-15 would allow it, but for their CCNRs.
And the size of their lot that would allow it. Right.
So, I guess, clarify for me. Could somebody in Broadview Shores have an ADU? Because again, my understanding was that what we had done ensured that they wouldn't.
I think this legislation would allow them to have the ADU unless the lot was so small that they could provide the parking or unless their CCNRs disallowed it. I'm not familiar with their CCNRs.
Okay. And the CCNRs currently don't allow a second kitchen, but the HOA could change that.
Well, the ordinance also doesn't allow the second kitchen.
Ordinance does not allow a second kitchen.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yeah, I think this might just be my, uh, lack of clarity on, let's see if I get you to the right line. So it's the, it's new two, like a, the two A, notwithstanding section 1430. Yeah, there you go. Um, I, I think there was a double negative because we were saying which areas were excluded from ADUs, right? And then it says, but we're not excluding areas on the map? Is that right?
Yes.
So now we have to, eh, like invert it and the areas on the map are included.
Yes.
Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah. It is confusing.
But just to be clear, to clarify, if you can scroll down more so we can see the language under that. That's not actually a change, it's just combining C and D into one paragraph.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make sure, like, the way I was reading it, I was, if you don't factor in the double negative, it seems like we're eliminating the shaded areas of the map. Or that's how I was reading it at first.
Yeah.
Counselor Hoben.
I guess I, I'd make a motion that since we now have a west side, a kind of a specifically west side, um, city council representative, that we continue this item until the new year when that city council member, she can weigh in and share her two cents. It kind of feels like there's, and maybe it's just me, but I, I think there's some lack of clarity on exactly what's happening, so, um, I'd make a motion, we continue it till the next meeting and get some feedback from future council member Becky Bogdan and some clarity on this.
I'll second that.
Okay. It doesn't need a vote because it's first hearing. So it's continued.
Why didn't you say that?
I'm just, just saying.
Just kidding, sorry.
Did we get two?
So I, I withdraw my motion then. Yeah, obviously, it's not, it doesn't count.
No, keep your motion.
Oh, keep my motion.
You just needed a second and it's continued. We didn't need to vote on the motion.
Gotcha. Interesting. Okay, thank you.
All right, so that item is continued. Next, implied motion and ordinance enacting the agritourism overlay zone. Citywide application presented by Aaron Ardmore.
All right. So, we're back here on the agritourism. Brief overview of the histories on this page. I won't go through it all again. We're, uh, we were directed to study basically three main items to come back with you. Uh, the definition of non-architectural metal needed to be clarified. Uh, the, the debate on paved parking versus non-paved parking and distance requirements. So, on the first subject, uh, I looked around to see, you know, what other cities, communities, how they define this. Uh, we came up with kind of a accumulation of kind of the best thoughts and ideas that were out there um, and proposed this definition. Um, you'll see that at the end as, as an additional, uh, section in the chapter. Uh, so that's that first one. So the second one, uh, was a bit interesting for me to go through. Um, we have all these kind of familiar places, uh, but none of them include actual event centers. Um, so then I looked at agritourism, did the word search through many cities. Uh, that term wasn't defined in all these cities that you see. Salt Lake County and Utah County do have it. Um, and as you can see, Salt Lake County requires pavement. Utah County is, uh, doesn't designate one way or the other. So my next task was to kind of look through uh, a Google search on popular agricultural event centers. Um, and go one by one through them, looking at Google Maps and such. Uh, so there's a summary here, but I thought it might be helpful, uh, for context to, to kind of go through each one of these. Um, I'll try to do it quickly because it's late. Uh, so London, Utah, we've, we've got paved access and then gravel stalls, as you could see. So a kind of a mix between the two, uh, residential around a agricultural property. Uh, here we've got grass parking. This was the only one that I found that actually parks on grass. Um, but again, a, a kind of same situation, uh, residential surrounding agricultural land. Uh, this is more of a, looks like more of a commercial venue, paved parking, paved access in Market Fork. Uh, this is very rural. Um, not, not much around there, uh, and they do have a gravel parking lot. Um, this also is very rural, but they do have a paved access parking lot. So there's, there's a little bit of, uh, variety with, with rural ones. Uh, another rural one, uh, paved access, some paved parking, uh, then overflow is gravel. Uh, here in Pleasant Grove, uh, more of an urban environment, similar to, to kind of what we'd probably be looking at on the west side, uh, with, with the amount of residential uses around, they have paved parking. Cedar Rose Ranch in Sandy is gravel. Uh, North Ridge Valley in Mapleton is gravel. And then Walker Farms is paved. Um, the majority are paved of the, the most popular sites, uh, according to Google. Um, so if none of that convinced you that, that paved is the right answer, uh, Lynn Schofield, uh, sent me this, this document, this, uh, email stating that it's important to have a drivable surface for a fire truck. The easiest way to do that is with asphalt. If you don't do asphalt, it's going to be just as expensive to do all the underlay of gravel and then the, the, the base that, that a gravel, that a fire truck can go on top of, uh, for fire protection. Um, in addition to those things, there's what we talked about last time with the possibility of spillover. We're wanting to avoid that. Uh, a gravel lot with unclear spaces, uh, would probably, um, provide more spillover parking in the residential neighborhoods that surround these, these uses. Um, so hopefully that's given you more context on, on why staff is promoting, um, a paved surface requirement. Uh, the last point was, uh, distance. Uh, and to be fair, we were trying to make a good compromise on this with the, the two applicants, uh, potential applicants that we'd have on these on the west side. Uh, but we, as staff, would, would defer to, to council's proposal on the proper distance of, of these event centers to, to residential buildings onsite or adjacent residential properties or, or even, uh, shelters that, uh, animal shelters. Um, so, so we kind of, we defer to you on that third point. Um, everything else is essentially the same. You see there, we added the, the 120 definition section uh, for a metal that is bare untreated or corrugated, uh, for, for that facade, uh, for an event center. Um, do you have any questions or do I need to cover any of this again?
Thanks, Aaron.
Okay.
You did a lot of work on this and I appreciate all the time that's been spent on this. And I think you've come to a good
Hopefully.
final solution.
Thank you.
But, um, any questions for Aaron? Counselor Handley.
I just want to thank you because I was one of the people who asked for this extra work and I appreciate it.
No problem, I think it helps staff.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
It really does. It helps us feel more justified and I saw.
Okay, good. Good, I'm glad, I'm glad. I, I am persuaded.
Any other questions for Aaron? All right, thank you, Aaron. We'd like to open this item up for public comment.
Hello. I'm Andrew Finch. Um, Mary and Judy are my parents. Um, and I, I do live here in Provo. I, uh, recently moved back to Provo with my wife and two kids. Um, my parents are at a family event out of town, but are watching online tonight. I want to focus on the fact that the Finch Family Farm is a living, working farm. My parents have made their living running this farm for over 30 years. They are building an event barn to supplement the income they make on the farm, not replace it. Finch Family Farm will continue to provide horse owners with fun, safe place to board their animals and enjoy working with them. Most of the farms the staff have researched are examples of agritourism. They no longer are earning a living from running their farm, but rather from the money they earn from the agritourism. There are farms that used to be orchards or used to be dairy farms, but now have a wedding venue or a corn maze to replace it. I focus on this distinction because Finch, Finch Family Farm should not be viewed as a wedding venue, rather a horse ranch with an event center on it. Agritourism is not the primary thing we do, horses are. It all works together unless it gets too fancy or complicated. Please allow us to have a parking lot that will be safe for our animals and will help lessen the expense of our event barn too. Let it be made with some things safer than asphalt. Let it be free of trees and curb and gutter so our animals and equipment can move safely. Our hope for the event barn is that it will fit nicely with what we already have going on. Any decisions we make have to account for the needs of our horse boarders as well as the safety of their animals. Asphalt is not safe for horses or their riders. It is slick, hard, hot, and encourages faster driving. We strongly suggest concrete road base as a better material for our. We strongly suggest concrete road base as a better material for our entry and our parking lot.
Becky Bogdan, Provo, Utah. I just want to bring up a couple of points. Here in this city, we have curb gutter and sidewalk. So. If you have something with gravel. That has mud. Number one, as someone else pointed out to me today, walking in that hills when you're going to a wedding, wedding venue is going to be awful. But if you're driving out of that with a bunch of mud on your tires, you're going to be flicking that on our asphalt roads. And that becomes a stormwater issue. So we don't allow construction to come out on our roads from. Either a gravel road or a dirt road and not have a street sweeper to come sweep that up because it's a stormwater violation. So that would be the one thing that would concern me here. The other thing I want to bring up is every time the mall has some kind of event with music. I get all sorts of phone calls and all sorts of complaints because it bothers. Little kids, old people, people with animals, and there's just all sorts of complaints. So it's. It's, people get very, very sensitive to noise ordinances and complaints with venues. Anyway, thanks.
Thanks, Becky.
I'm Adam Finch. I'm also Barry and Judy's uh, son. Uh, and I'd just like to combat what the fire. Thing he said with the fire trucks coming in and out. I have personally driven ten tons of pumpkins in the trailer out of that yard hundreds of times. I feel like a, a fire truck could get in and out of there easy. It's not loose gravel. It's compacted. And we're just going to add more onto it. It's not going to be any problem for a fire truck to get in and out. The opening for the. Farm is plenty wide for a fire truck to get in and out. Um, and then also they showed earlier the. Um, sports park and what it is right now. I just want to remind you that that was our farm and we're coming up with this new idea. Because of that, because we have to come up with new ideas to save our farm. It's. And just to add this astronomical expense with an asphalt parking lot is just, I just think it's a little strange. And it might just kill the project on itself. So uh, just. Hope that you're thinking of that when you're making this decision.
Thanks, Adam. Any more public comment? Okay, I'd like to bring this back for council discussion. Counselor Handley.
I'm, um, Mr. Finch introduced a term that with which I'm not familiar, concrete road base. Can. Can you address that, Aaron? Do you know what that? No idea?
I couldn't. I wish we had somebody from public works or engineering. They probably could, but I, I don't have that expertise. I'm sorry.
Can I ask Mr. Finch what he meant? Okay.
So it compacts and does get quite flat and level. Um, it shouldn't get super muddy. It allows water to drain through it a little better. But it's not loose like a gravel parking lot would be.
And it's made out of.
Crushed concrete.
Ground up concrete. Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right. Any other discussion? Counselor Fillmore.
Uh, I'm, I'm really on the fence on this one. Have our, Aaron, have our, any of our people taken into account this concept of crushed concrete on top of gravel? How that would affect the concerns you've raised? Is this a new thought for you?
Um, I, I think all the discussions that we've had as staff with, with David Day, with Lynn Schofield, um. Asphalt or concrete is the preferred treatment. Um, you know, there's mill tailings. That's been the discussion. There's gravel. That's been the discussion. Um, I don't know if this specific concrete road base has been thought of in, in their minds as we talk about these things. Um, but that's.
I mean, if that's a new concept, maybe it merits some discussion. I, I'm in favor of agritourism as a general concept. I've always been a little worried about the noise factor here, but uh, if the road base is the issue. Maybe that's a decent compromise that could accommodate fire engines and Becky's concern about mud and. I mean, does it merit examining that option?
It's still not a drivable surface. It, I mean, it still goes back to Lynn's comment that some, some. Structure beneath that would have to be constructed first, that this was put on top of. Before it would be drivable for fire trucks or anything, any kind of heavy equipment. That even though it compacts and kind of holds itself together, gather a little bit better, better than just regular gravel. It's still going to move and separate when you get heavy equipment driving over it. So it's not, it's not drivable for them. They can't navigate through it.
Okay.
I think it's important with this that in a way staff has spent so much time on it is we have to think long term, right? An event center is going to last a hundred plus years. It's completely different than having a barn. On someone's property. This is an event center where hundred plus people are going to come. And I mean, hopefully it's successful and they have hundreds and thousands of people coming. I, you know, it's just, we have to think long term and we have to think the whole city and we have to think. Everyone who wants to do it. And. Can't think short term on this. Counselor Hoben?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve um, the proposal put forth by staff.
I'll second that. Any discussion on the motion? All right, we will take a vote. Counselor Shipley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple?
No.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore. That passes six. I'm so sorry. Counselor Handley.
I'll vote no.
That passes five to two. All right, guys. Do I need to read the continued items, Brian? All right. Um, if there's no objection, we will now adjourn the program of council meeting by unanimous consent.